Discussion and feedback on the process for potentially developing a downtown parking structure. And Jim Cogan will be presenting. I will also welcome everyone to the Menlo Park City Council meeting for April 24, 2018. This is a study session that precedes the actual regular meeting that hopefully we will get to shortly after 7:00. So, Jim, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jim Cogan. I'm your Housing and Economic Development Manager. And we're here to talk about one of the council's top six priorities for this year, exploring a downtown parking structure. So, just to go back through some of the timeline real quick, we obviously had the council goal-setting priority setting in February. We hosted a community meeting last Monday. And just to let you know how we were able to get such a good turnout for that meeting, we sent out 1,600 postcards and then did a lot of outreach through email and social media and even did some knock and talks downtown. I want to thank Mike Nochi on my staff for a lot of his work in getting the word out. We had just under 50 people show up for that meeting and provide us with some good feedback. Part of our outreach was to do an online survey, which was open for a week and was available to folks at that meeting. So, people were filling out the survey online at the meeting. And then, of course, tonight, we have our study session where we're hoping to get direction from the council on which approach to take going forward. So, just to orient the council, I know you are all well aware of the specific plan as you did a study session on that last week. But for those in the audience who aren't fully aware of identified sites in the specific plan, we're looking at plazas 1, 2, and 3. And in the specific plan, there is the thought of two garages that would be between these three sites. So, there was some study done that Plaza number 1 and Plaza number 3 could hold a garage that would be of up to 650 parking spaces. And then Plaza number 2 would accommodate around 250 parking spaces. This is more of a breakdown from the specific plan. It shows the three different plazas and kind of the parking target that we're going for, which is right around 1,500 new parking spaces downtown. It's important to note that while the specific plan and various studies since then have identified a, I would say, not an abundance of parking, but that there were at somewhere in the neighborhood of 80% of our parking utilization right now, in order to accommodate future development downtown, there is a need for new parking. So, to bring it more specifically, these are the three plazas and kind of in the additional parking spaces that we could, we've identified for those plazas. We wanted to look at some comparable parking structures. So, if the council directs staff to go in the direction of just a parking, straight-up parking garage, this is one example that recently opened in 2016 in Morgan Hill. Notice that it's three levels above grade, 271 parking spaces, and with a total cost of $12.2 million. We factored out the $2.1 million that they needed for a land acquisition, which gave us a per-space cost, which is really the best way to compare different garage developments and different options. So, a per-parking space cost of $37,454. And unfortunately, that's kind of the bargain price as we're looking at development because, obviously, construction costs have gone up. When you talk with the development community, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 10% per year since 2012. And this was completed in 2016. We look at the Palo Alto parking garage that has been proposed for California Avenue, and you get a much higher cost. So, that's a 636-space parking structure. With the two below-grade levels, once you hit that second level below grade, you almost have an exponential increase in cost. So, their per-space cost is $72,000 for an overall projected cost of $45.8 million. So, if we took those numbers in that range in the parking garages and applied it to the parking garages that have been identified in the specific plan, we're looking at $24 million to $46 million for the garages that could be accommodated by lots 1 and 3, and then between $9 and $18 million for lot number 2. And, you know, as it notes on the slide, currently, we have $0 million identified for this effort. And so, we would have to figure out how to pay for the parking garage. And obviously, that's a pretty high, pretty big nut to have to crack. So, we wanted to look at some possible funding strategies. This is not meant to be comprehensive, but just to give the council an idea of different funding strategies that we'd love your direction on pursuing. The first, a citywide bond initiative. Obviously, in order to do that, we would want to do more extensive polling because the 2/3 voter approval requirement is really a difficult one to get over. And you wouldn't want to put something on the ballot until we knew that it had a good likelihood of being approved by the voters. We're too close to this election cycle, so we would have to wait for the next election cycle. We could have a facilities district, which only requires a majority vote of the affected property owners. That can get a little dicey in how you identify the impact on different properties. And there's a weighted impact and therefore a weighted cost, or a weighted benefit and therefore a weighted cost. And that can take a while to figure out with the affected property owners. And then, the third option, which I think will provide not only for a parking garage, but other potential uses to enhance the downtown, would be a public-private partnership. But that would require a mixed-use development because there isn't anyone in the development community who's likely to come out and just build us a garage. So, we would need to engage in additional public outreach to determine the preferred uses. It would probably take the city identifying a request for proposal, putting together requests for proposals, and then engaging in that public process to choose a proposal. At the end of which, it would make sense to have an exclusive negotiation agreement with a developer to really work out the fine points of a deal. So, as an example of some of the types of mixed use that staff has heard from the community, you know, movie theater and entertainment venue is kind of high on the list. Market or affordable housing, retail shops, restaurants, open space, all of those are discussed in the specific plan, not in conjunction with a parking garage, but just as enhancements for downtown. So, in order to kind of jumpstart the feedback from the community, we put together a survey online. I am sure that you all filled out your own survey. I'm one of the 413 folks who helped participate in that. This is just the six questions that were listed, and we'll go through in, with specifics on the results of that. So, this is good news for us. 98% of the people who responded actually go to downtown Menlo Park. So, that's exciting that people are coming to Menlo Park. We won't celebrate them going to Palo Alto, but we realize that that is one of our competitive or competitors to downtown. And I'm just thrilled that people go to Menlo Park more often than they go to Palo Alto. And so, then, of course, the other, this is the breakdown of the other kind of similar downtowns that we chose. The reason that people are attending those downtowns, it's really no surprise that restaurants really kind of rate the highest. But entertainment is in there as well, obviously, retail. Then, kind of questions as to the type of use we could combine with a garage. Restaurants really hit the plurality of responses, which is, again, no surprise. Movie theater and entertainment came in high, as did affordable housing, market or affordable housing. And then, this was an interesting response. You know, one of the ways that you could help finance a mixed-use development would be to charge for parking and have that be a revenue stream. So, we had to ask whether people would support paid parking. With 54% of people saying yes, I think that is a positive for a future project. This was really to, the distance walk that people would be willing to walk helps with identifying possible locations. If the majority of people wanted to be within one block, that would make it kind of difficult. But looking at plazas 1 or 3 means that you can, you're within that two to three blocks. And then, our last question, which was really kind of just open for feedback, we didn't want to go through and list all of the 221 responses, although we'll be happy to make those available. But we did see some recurring themes that we wanted to identify. People are definitely interested in it being attractive, having an attractive addition if there is a garage downtown. You know, the exploration of underground parking, of course. Free parking for the first hour to and a half to two hours is interesting. It's very similar to one of the garages in Redwood City that I think works very well for downtown Redwood City. And then, some of the other items that, you know, you would expect in dealing with downtown Menlo Park, whether it be the small-town feel. And then, there were a lot of comments on, in favor of housing. I think one of the interesting things is that there were a number of people who didn't feel that there was necessarily a need for additional parking downtown. And, you know, again, I think that that shows that right now, our parking plazas are working pretty well to bring folks in and to house the cars that we have coming to downtown. But we are limited by the parking that's downtown as far as allowing for additional development. And I think that's really, that was part of the goal of the specific plan. And it's, I think, one of the reasons that we have seen no new development on Santa Cruz since the adoption of the specific plan. And so, with that, that ends staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Jim. Unless there's any qualifying questions, I think, let's go to speakers. Bray, did you have a qualifying question? Okay. Judy Adams, followed by Meg McGraw-Sher. Hi, Judy, good evening.
Hi, Judy Adams. I live downtown in the downtown district on Live Oak. I spoke at the 16th meeting, so I'm going to try to look a little bit at some of my comments. The first comment I would make is that I was moved by the conversations at the meeting about need for housing. I'm not sure whether housing associated with a parking garage is necessarily a good idea. I'm also worried about the cost of underground parking. It doesn't look like we have a budget for that for some time, but I'm hopeful. But I also feel that a parking structure in the downtown that had a movie theater that was a full-time, small, double-screen, let's say, or three-screen that showed mainstream movies would add to the downtown feel and be complementary to whatever films are shown at the New Guild by the Peninsula Arts Guild, that they could attract different kinds of It may be that there is in parking, and I walk to town, so I very rarely need to look for a parking space. But if the 2010 parking study is being used as a measure and we're looking to future development, it seems to me that we're going to have to find more solutions to parking, unless we become a shuttle-driven city where people park somewhere off a pedestrian street and take a shuttle into town. And I don't see that as happening. So, I would like to propose that the city try to work out perhaps a small residential affordable housing area with sufficient parking for the residents there, because they will need parking, and additional parking to pick up some of the gap we're going to have in parking spaces in the future. And if we can afford two parking structures, I would vote for a movie theater and maybe a small restaurant or café associated with that with parking. I'll agree with speakers from the meeting on the 16th that we need to grow up vertically and that we need to have attractive structures. I think that funding is going to be a major issue, but obviously, so the city council will have to consider that. But there are sources of income that could come if there were a movie facility there, if we didn't take up too much downtown space with residential possibilities and allowed space for retail, for stores associated with a parking garage. You know, there's not a lot of land, so I think we do have to move into the sky a little bit. Thank you. Good luck on the decision.
Thank you, Judy. Appreciate your input. Meg McGraw-Sher, followed by Daniel Velvied.
Meg, good evening.
Hi, how are you guys? So, I'm Meg McGraw-Sher. I'm a Menlo Park resident, and I'm also on the Housing Commission. I'm, what I'm saying tonight is, are my views. We haven't really had the opportunity to discuss the specific issue as a commission. So, what I just, I had two points that I wanted to share with you all. First is if the city does decide to explore the, a mixed-use structure for the parking structure, so parking with something else, I would love for the city council to consider affordable housing. I know, no surprise that that's what I would be saying. For, you know, many reasons, it would be such a wonderful opportunity to get some affordable housing downtown that's not in Bellhaven, in a part of town where we could really see, you know, increased opportunities for people to be living, access to great schools, transit services. So, I just want to push forth that idea. The other thing that I felt like I wanted to say was, I understand that this is just in the beginning stages, and just even the parking structure itself is a complex thing to contemplate. But, as you all know, building affordable housing is really difficult, and especially on the peninsula, a lot of communities that are successful doing it are communities that are able to get access to free land. And that means the communities themselves are taking their public land and saying, "We'd like housing to be here." So, it's kind of goes counter to what we're talking about, but I'd love to see a portion of one of the parking lots allocated for affordable housing. I think that that's one of the best ways that we could see affordable housing come to this side of Menlo Park and to downtown. So, again, I'd like for you to consider that as an option as well. That's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Meg. Daniel Velvied, I think, if I pronounce that correctly. I apologize if I didn't, followed by Michelle Tate.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Daniel Valverde. And I'm here to speak on behalf of, speak on behalf of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. Our mission is to work with communities and leaders to create and preserve quality affordable housing. Thank you for your leadership and the opportunity to comment tonight. Affordable housing is needed in downtown, and this is a rare opportunity to make it happen, utilizing public land to build affordable housing in downtown will make it easier for families to access transportation, parks, support your local businesses, and allow their children to access the best schools in the country. Also, due to the high cost of land, this is an opportunity to build affordable housing at a lower cost. And also, Burlingame right now, and San Mateo currently both have proposals in their downtowns to build affordable housing on top of their parking, and it could be done here, too. As you weigh these options tonight, please remember that affordable homes are true life-changing. By changing the course of history here in Menlo Park, building towards and includes the community, affordable housing in downtown will be a way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Michelle Tate, followed by Adina Levin. Michelle, good evening.
Hello, council members and Mayor Taki. Michelle Tate, Bellhaven resident, and I am the Chair of the Housing Commission. However, I'm speaking for myself tonight. And that is to encourage you to consider housing on the parking lots. Again, as everyone else has already said that spoke prior to me, this is like a great use of public land and in a wonderful location. The parking lots currently are positioned perfectly. I mean, there's nothing more to really say about that. We all understand proximity to transit and how life-changing it can be for a lot of people to be in, access to better schools, transportation, good food, everything. It's really a perfect opportunity, and the cost would be lower since we do own the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Adina Levin, followed by Lynn Bramlett.
My name is Adina Levin, and I'm here representing the Complete Streets Commission this evening. We had our agenda item last week to discuss downtown parking and access. And I was delegated to write a letter with the commission's feedback, which you hopefully have received by email, and that has been reviewed by the commission in addition to, like, transcribing the things that people had said. So, the goal of the, having a parking garage in the staff report is that the city does hear from downtown merchants about customers' concerns about parking, as well as the goals of future development to meet the goals of the city's downtown plan. And the Complete Streets Commission very strongly and enthusiastically supports the goals of improving downtown access, to have many people enjoying our downtown streets, you know, patronizing downtown merchants and restaurants and enjoying the downtown and other potential, you know, current and potential goals of the downtown plan. We also, there are many improvements that we see that could relieve customer and merchant concerns about parking sooner than the multiple years it would take to fund and build a parking garage, and in a more cost-effective manner than building a parking structure as well. So, we do urge the council to consider these multimodal improvements and proven strategies that other cities have used, and also to very closely scrutinize the cross-benefit of a garage bearing all of these other improvements in mind. And I wanted to go through some of these different options and considerations with some donated time. So, I mentioned positively, you know, we do, we support the goals in the plan and what the council is potentially considering for entertainment and housing and land use goals. And the ability to have shared parking is a really effective way of utilizing the space and allowing the developments of some of the smaller lots. And also, street space downtown is limited, so if we did have parking garages, we might be able to take some on-street parking, you know, maybe not in the most popular shopping areas, but on side streets, move into the garage, and then have some of the space downtown used for protected bike lanes and potentially wider sidewalks to enable more people to bicycle and walk downtown. One of the things that we heard from staff in the presentation to us was that the parking crunch really is for one or two hours in the middle of the day at lunch. And one of the things that we see in some other cities, including Mountain View, is they're exploring a pilot with Lyft or Uber and giving out coupons to people or discounts so that they can get downtown without having to park. And if we gave out two coupons for $5, it would, 72,000, like Palo Alto's parking garage, 36 years, we would be able to get Lyft and Uber coupons for, you know, two years to meet that need. So, that's a very cost-effective way of doing it. The other thing is that people are really frustrated when they can't see a parking space in front of them. 1, 2, and 3 get filled up, but some, there's often space in the other parking garages. And therefore, other cities are, you know, put up electronic signs that can show how many spaces are available. If you're willing to walk a couple of blocks, then you can find that. You have no stress. You go, you see where it is. So, that's another, you know, it's much, costs money, but it's much cheaper than a new garage. A transportation demand management. Palo Alto has been very successful, including in small businesses with retail and restaurant workers. It doesn't work for everybody, but if, you know, maybe 10% or 15% or 20% of people could get transportation benefits, like they're available to larger companies and can take advantage of opportunities not to drive, that could free up space for customers to come and enjoy, and therefore free up that space. 1,300 El Camino Real uses, is based on our parking standards for someplace close to the train. And there's a good reason to believe that that has a lot of, that may have surplus parking. And that developer had said that they would be willing, if they have surplus parking, to make it available to the city. And that could be made potentially available at a discount to workers so that, you know, it's slightly less convenient to cross the street, and perhaps provide that space that is already there. Parking meters, as was mentioned. And our concerns were that building a parking garage and making it most easier to drive and park tends to encourage more people to drive, whereas if we really manage our space well and improve other modes, you know, we'll get what we incent. The other thing that we're looking at is changing technology. I sent a link to a study from the city of San Diego that's seeing less use of their downtown parking because of Lyft and Uber. And that is, that was reported in many cities around the U.S. And I think that, so we should be very careful and cautious about looking at the cost-effectiveness and also the potential future lifespan of a parking garage, and in the meantime, pursue these different proven avenues to improve access and parking in the meanwhile. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. Lynn Bramlett, followed by Fran Dean. Hi, Lynn.
Hello. Hello, council. This is a complex subject, and I first want to thank staff for the report and the community outreach process. I did have a question that wasn't answered. It's not critical, but the public benefit funding. So, if we could get some details on that, that would be helpful. I just want to say that I think we need, we need more parking. And, you know, clearly, we just heard another proposal for how to accomplish that. I hadn't thought about it till I heard the presentation, that I don't go to Palo Alto and I don't go to Redwood City deliberately because of parking problems, you know, driving around trying to find it during the daytime, during night. And I do walk downtown. I'm lucky to live close enough to walk down there. If I have to drive, I have trouble finding a spot, you know, circle around, no matter what time I go. You know, I go all during the day. If you do move ahead with this project in a fiscally responsible way, as we've talked about, not saying anyone wouldn't, but, you know, if there's support there, I would like to see a theater. And I would also like to see housing, because I think it's time to really, really start doing something about affordable housing in this part of Menlo Park. And the other thing I want to bring up, I think we need a way to keep our small businesses in town. You know, I go to alterations, go to the hair cutter. My alterations person said she's probably going to have to move out because her rent was just tripled. So, you know, that's part of our community, too. And I said I would bring that up when I got a chance. So, you know, thank you, and definitely not an easy decision.
Thank you, Lynn. Fran Dean, followed by Katie Beruzzi. Good evening, Fran.
Good evening. Subject near and dear to my heart. Fran Dean, Chamber of Commerce. Okay, so during the 2018 council goal-setting session, the council, excuse me, the chamber requested that council prioritize a parking solution. One of the specific plan goals is to develop parking One of the specific plan goals is to develop parking strategies and facilities that meet the commercial and residential needs of the community. We need a parking solution. Without adequate parking, Menlo Park cannot achieve vibrancy. Without adequate parking, retail will not increase, become more diversified, or thrive. And without adequate parking, new business opportunities will be lost to neighboring cities. Menlo Park has wrestled with parking for decades, even before our Lynn this time, I might add. We need available parking to support downtown businesses, and I have copies of many reports and renditions, including Downtown Parking Alternatives and EIR, August 74, Parking Task Force Report, May 85, Downtown Parking Structure Study, September 86, Wilbur Smith and Associates, December 1998, and Downtown Parking Feasibility Study, October 2004, Council Staff Report on Design Alternatives, April 2005, but we haven't acted. It's time to move forward with parking solutions with our both, which are both immediate and long-term. Identify the preferred plaza, determine the optimal solution, identify the financing, and build. Our preference is a structure with a willing partner who may desire a shared space. This was an opportunity a few years ago, in 2004, and perhaps remains today. In the interim, do not reduce the current parking inventory for any reason. Consider extending the long-term pay option to all plazas. Issue a design RFP for a structure in Plazas 1 and 3, an aesthetic design either above or below ground. An underground alternative would result in open space, a park, or recreation area. And although Justin Murphy, who was our Public Works Director of Public Works, only perused this this evening, I have an EIR from August 74 and an EIR from May 1987. 1987 is a slip, but it feels like that long. They include Plazas 1 and 3, and our city attorney might even say that EIR is still current. I would like a nod of his head, but it's going in the wrong direction. We have the IRs. We've gotten that far. Now let's keep going. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Katie Baruzzi, followed by Jen Wallison. Hi, Katie.
Hi, Katie Baruzzi. I support what Adina said, but I'm coming to speak about a different thing related to parking. First of all, I just want to say I'm amused right now that we're talking about parking in Menlo Park. Menlo Park, we should be able to park. It's a bad pun. All right. So I've been thinking about this a lot, and I'll just acknowledge, sorry, let me just give you guys a moment. So I want to acknowledge that the parking situation downtown is incredibly inefficient. We have all this space, surface area, very expensive real estate, and right now, for the most part, we're not charging for it, and it's, we don't have anything on top of it except for a single, a single layer of parking, and we don't have any way for people to figure out where they want to go to park. We have all the things Adina talked about, so it's possible that adding a parking garage is definitely what we should be doing. But I want to take a step back and encourage you to think really clearly about this. In the social impact sector, we talk a lot about a theory of change, which is basically the idea that if you have an end goal that you're going for, a mission, a desired outcome, you want to first about, you want to first take a few steps back and look at, you know, what are the logical steps to get us there? So what's the problem we're trying to solve? What's the end we want to see? And what do we need to do in the meantime? What do we need to, you know, what are the inputs? What are the outputs? What are the outcomes? And we have a lot of opportunity right now to look at social science, look at economics, look at, look at psychology, look at, look at studies of what's been done in other cities, and try to figure out, you know, what's the most elegant, cost-effective solution that we can come up with in our city? Because I think that just throwing a parking garage up without understanding what we expect it to do is not necessarily going to solve our problems. So for example, I'm not even clear. I know some people want to solve the problem of access. It feels like there's not enough space downtown right now for people to get there. So, and other people want to solve the problem of safety. I've heard from a lot of people that they would like to see pedestrian zones, they'd like to see wider sidewalks. I personally was pulling out of the Trader Joe's parking lot the other day, and I almost got hit by a car because there's so much parallel parking on the street on Menlo Ave that I couldn't see somebody was coming. So that's sketchy, too. And then for some people, it's a matter of convenience, which I'm not sure a parking garage would solve, because if you're asking people, again, to walk further, that's not necessarily, let's say you build a parking garage, and then you decide, great, now we can take some on-street parking off. That's not going to solve the convenience thing that some people wanted, where they still want to be able to go to CVS without walking two blocks, or Walgreens, rather. So I just want to think really clearly about what the problem is you're trying to solve, what are the various options? And I'll throw one more thing out that didn't make it into the Complete Streets menu, which was share, bike, what is it called? Dockless Bike Shares. I was just in Durham, North Carolina. Those green bikes, lime bike were everywhere, and it was super awesome. So I could imagine a world in which 500 El Camino Real people didn't have to get in their cars to go to lunch at Cafe Barone. They could just hop on a bike and ride a quarter of a mile and then come back. So let me just throw that out you. Thanks.
Thank you, Katie. Jen Wallison, followed by Diane Ditmar. Jen, good evening.
Good evening, council. Jen Wallison, I sent you an email earlier today, so I'm not going to take too much time, but just my point was, I would just want you to be careful that you're not just thinking about today, but that we're thinking about the future and all of the innovation that's happening now with transportation and autonomous vehicles, and also with streaming service for movies. I just would hate for us to spend tens of millions of dollars and end up with a shrine to the past. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Diane Ditmar, followed by John Conway. Diane.
Hi, I'm Diane Ditmar, and I'm a resident of Menlo Park for the last several decades now. And personally, I call it Menlo No Park, and I'd like to see that change. It would be a great, it would be great if we could have more parking downtown. We all want a vibrant downtown, and I appreciate the survey that was presented that showed that people wanted restaurants and movies, and I think that's wonderful. The problem is that we cannot accommodate the workers for those, because we don't have low-wage workers who can afford to live in Menlo Park. And so I would deeply encourage us to build parking as well as affordable housing in Menlo Park, so that we can have a vibrant downtown with restaurants, with movie theaters, with retail, and accommodate workers who can work in those places. So that's it. Let's turn Menlo Park, or Menlo No Park, back into Menlo Park.
Thank you, Diane. John? John Conway. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Otaki, council members, the city staff. I'm John Conway, 1200 El Camino Real, and I head up the Menlo Park Downtown Business Group. First of all, I'd like to personally thank you on behalf of the Downtown Business Group at the Gold Setting Meeting and making this a priority item for the city of Menlo Park. We've got to revitalize the downtown area and be more competitive with our neighbors to the north and to the south of us. I think the way to do this is financing is through affordable housing. At the Gold Setting Meeting, there was a lot of talk about not enough affordable housing in Menlo Park, so I think that'd be one way to help finance this, along with the other things that were mentioned by the city staff earlier by Jack. That's all I really have to say, but I'd like to see us do this now, sooner than later, and let's get on with the process, build this, and revitalize Menlo Park. Thank you for the service to our community.
Thank you, John. Any other speaker cards? All right. Thank you, everyone who came to speak. For those of you who will, who've come for our regular meeting, we're just finishing up on our study session, so be patient with us as we go through our discussion. Diane, did you have a card?
Yeah, I did turn in a card.
Okay, great. Why don't you come on up? You can fill the card in later.
I hate to delay you. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm Director of Menlo Spark, a local environmental group. I just wanted to add the environmental perspective on the parking garage. Very much appreciate all of the hard work that's gone into this very long conversation at the city, and very much agree with the comments that were sent in by the Complete Streets Commission via Adina Levin. I just wanted to note that normally, environmental groups are quite apprehensive about adding new parking, because it attracts more cars, more pollution, more congestion, and that's the last thing that we need or want. We view the garage as really an opportunity to revitalize downtown and to replace parking and not add more parking. It's really a golden opportunity to add more affordable housing, and so many folks have already spoke to that, and so I won't elaborate. I'll just note that we would love to see the garage free up the on-street parking, creating safer biking spaces, wider sidewalks, and look at increasing densities with new housing near transit and mixed-use development. These are all the elements that we would love to see, and hopefully, in conjunction with an update to the downtown plan. And to Jen Wallison's comment, you know, we hope that private car ownership will soon be obsolete and replaced by electric shuttles and electric shared-vehicle fleets. That's not here yet, and so we hope that any new garage could be designed so that it could be repurposed. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Diane. All right, we'll come up here. I see that Vice Mayor Mueller has, would like to make a comment. Go ahead or ask a question.
Yeah, I'll just make my comments real quick, so we can move on. So I'm not opposed to doing housing. My big issue, and we talk about housing with the structure frankly, is twofold. One, it's, I think the number, the amount, the number of units we get frankly are minimal. If you want to talk about adding housing to the downtown, you're really talking about upzoning those apartment complexes around the downtown. I get concerned that we will get very focused on, oh, we added housing in this area, when there was a greater opportunity around that. And then specifically also, when you're looking at the fact, I also get a little nervous when we're starting to convert uses. So the downtown will be the downtown size forever, and the commercial and retail uses there, that'll be it. You're never able to really convert housing back to retail uses and commercial uses. So once we add the housing on top of that structure, the use, the basic use has changed to a mixed use at that, at that area, which is fine if that's what we want to do. Frankly, one of the Guild projects that had come forward earlier but never got actually to project stage, had talked about putting housing on top of the Guild for employees, and I hear that, and actually, that was persuasive to me tonight. So I am, I am inclined to go ahead and look at in the construction of the garage, putting housing on top of the garage specifically for the purpose of downtown, downtown workers. That being said, I do feel very strongly about the fact that sub-level, especially if you're looking at sub-basement level, the opportunity to put in entertainment use in the downtown. We see, when you look at that survey, if you look at, if you combine entertainment with restaurant, with retail, it's overwhelming that people have that desire to be added to the downtown. I've heard some comments about, well, movies may not, not be here. Actually, it's segmented. If you look at movie theaters that are using technology, there's actually 15% growth in the market last year, where you're seeing decline in single, single art house, single art house movie theaters, and also movie theaters that are just frankly flat. But what we're, what we're really trying to look at, at least what I'm interested in is looking at the theaters that are really designed as amenities to areas, to enliven them like you see in ski resorts and whatnot, that can still run first-run movie theaters and are small enough that you have the, such a demand around it that people do actually use them and fill them up. So I, I still very much, as this comes back to us, want to see that. The one point I did want to make to my colleagues that I haven't made yet and we haven't talked about is, I do see, I think it's really important as we get into the financing stage of this to maybe remain consistent, and we, if it does require bond work at all, that we go out and pull on that. I think what we do is we try to put together the best fin, the best-looking menu of items possible, and what that looks like from a financial perspective, and then bring that forward. So kind of filling the cart now. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Mueller. I'm going to take the opportunity to ask Councilmember Keith if she's on the line, if she has any questions.
Hi, everybody. Yes, thank you for coming to me, and I'll make some comments now, too. I think we talked about this last week with the downtown specific plan discussion, and now we're diving deeper into the parking garage issue. So one of the things that I've been bringing up, and I brought it up last year when I was mayor, about looking at subsidizing rideshares programs, such as Uber and Lyft, to subsidize those rides for our residents to come downtown. And it is something that other cities are looking at, and I keep, I keep bringing it up, and I think I will keep bringing it up, because I think it's a good idea, and it's something we could do without having to build anything. And Mountain View is looking at this now, and I know Adina brought it up earlier in her talking. I brought it up last year, and then when we had the parking discussion last Monday, I guess. So I'm glad that people want us to look at that and pursue that. I think that's important, because I think whatever we do with the parking garage, it's going to take a long time to actually build it. So if we can start subsidizing some pro, some ride share now, that, that's an attractive solution now. And then I just want to point out that Peninsula Volunteers is subsidizing ride share through the, they got a grant to help people, seniors, get to their doctor's appointment. So people, seniors are doing that now in Menlo Park, and I think it's great. So if we can expand that to coming to restaurants, going to the train station, coming downtown for your errands or whatever, I think that would be really helpful. And then looking through, some of the comments I made last week also were that I think affordable housing is important, and that this could be a great opportunity to do so, to add some affordable housing, and it's so important to add it on this side of 101. And since we own the land, this is a great opportunity. And I appreciated Daniel Valverde talking about Burlingame and San Mateo, looking at proposals now for housing over parking. So we're not, we're not unique in looking at this idea, and I think it's really important to analyze more. Clearly, if we build a parking garage, the point is to create more parking downtown. So if housing was above the parking garage, it would have to have additional parking for those housing units, so that we're actually getting more parking spots downtown. I mentioned this at the study session on the parking garage, too, that I think whatever we look at, the parking garage itself needs to be flat and not built at an angle, and that there should be a ramp on the outside of the garage, so that in the future, as we see more use of autonomous vehicles and ride sharing, and people coming downtown in different manners, that we would be able to repurpose the parking garage into some other use, assuming it was built without slopes, so that, so it was flat. Thanks, Judy, for speaking about the entertainment. A couple of people spoke about that. I'm interested in that. I think the limitation we're going to find is that when we start looking downtown, and those garage, the lot sites, that we're going to have to go up higher, obviously. And the question will become for our residents is how high do we want to go to get all these different amenities, such as the affordable housing, entertainment, parking? So I'll look forward to that discussion as we move forward. Let's see. Thanks, Adina Levin, for bringing up multimodal options, which is key also. Oh, the other thing I want to bring up is, I think a short-term thing that we should be looking at, and I mentioned this earlier, is the Parker app, and it's P-A-R-K-E-R. And it's an app to help people find parking spaces that are available, because a lot of people spend time driving around in circles, producing greenhouse gas emissions, trying to find a parking space. And we could do a pilot program to add sensors to our parking spots that would allow people to find those spots and get to them easier. So I think in the short term, we should be doing some of those things. Thanks, Fran, for speaking about extending the long-term pay to all lots. I also agree that that is something I think we should do. So those are my comments, and thanks so much for the staff report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Keith. Councilmember Carlton.
Okay, so some of the people that have spoken had asked about, you know, the need and all this, and one of the things that we hear a lot is from people that work downtown and having to move their car and, and paying to, there are only some lots that allow them to stay long-term. We also hear from people with young children and the elderly that want to park close, or the lazy, who want to park very close to where they're shopping. And having a parking structure has, gives us the advantage of giving the people who work downtown a place to put their cars, potentially a place to put their cars potentially long-term so they're not constantly moving them, and it frees up the spaces around the shops so that the people who, whether by need or by want, would like to be close to the shops, it frees up those spaces. And while we're doing that, it also gives people the opportunity, I would suggest, to plug in their electric car, because most electric cars need to be plugged in for a few hours to really have a good charge. And this gives us the opportunity to maybe pay as you charge for three hours or four hours while you have lunch, you have your hair done, you pick up a pair of shoes, you head back, you know, you're done for the afternoon. So in terms of design, I have seen designs where you can design parking where they're a little bit taller than your average parking space, and they're designed so that in 40, 50 years, they can easily be turned into loft apartments. Those already, that design already exists and is proven and out there for us to take advantage of. So that's an easy thing to address. I was going to point out, Sam Sennett gave me a design, he's a local architect. He's already designed our parking place with our small theater, with a little restaurant in such a way that the theater and the restaurant would help pay for the structure. And he had it right behind where Afterwards is and the ballet place. I'm not saying it's perfect the way it is, but it's a good start. So we have people coming up with interesting ideas. And I keep hearing people say that the younger people, people are not going to be driving cars anymore, the new generation's all going to take Uber. And so I started thinking, I know that Facebook has this really bad parking problem, and I think the average age of people working at Facebook, I'm old apparently because the, I think the average is like 27. And so I was, you were there at that lunch, and they had the woman that's in charge of parking for Facebook. And so I asked her, what is up with that? If the younger generation is not driving, why do you have a parking problem when you have a bunch of, the average age of being 27? And she said that the new research that's coming out of the experts in traffic and parking is that they may buy cars a little bit later, probably because they have horrible loans that they're paying off from university, but nonetheless, people are buying cars, and younger people are buying cars. And I have an electric car, and by God, I wish it was better at driving me home by myself, but right now they keep periodically killing people when they test them. So I think we're a few decades off on that. Therefore, as much as I think it's fantastic, and I encourage as many people to ride their bicycle downtown as possible, and I love the new bicycle stands, they're cute, that say Menlo Park, they're great design. Thank you, staff, so much for doing that. That's wonderful. I would even argue we need more, but not everybody has that luxury. Some people live too far, some people have too many kids, some people have arthritis, some people don't have the time. Not everybody has the luxury of driving a bicycle, and for those who don't, we need to make sure that they can come down to Menlo Park. Because if we don't, we try so hard to get people down to Menlo Park, and we spend so much time to make it cool and fun with places like Mademoiselle Colette and working on the Guild and all this. We must have parking. We must. This is not a debate. If we're going to have more thriving downtown, by definition, we need to put people somewhere. And I'd like to see us move forward thoughtfully. I don't want to see some ugly, I don't think anybody wants to see some big ugly box. No one wants that. No one wants this to be horrible. We're all on the same side of the fence. We all want a great downtown. We all want a place where you can easily park. We all want fantastic amenities. And so I think we're all on the same side of the fence. I think we need to sit down and work this out. But I'm happy that we're finally moving forward on this. This goes back to my grandmother saying of the snails whizzing by make us dizzy. You know, we need to actually bite the bullet, and we need to move forward, and I'm happy to see that we're doing this. And I'm happy that we find a way, even within the parking garage, to have a place that's covered to park bicycles, that's covered to park all the different ways that people, in a complete streets fashion, so that we welcome everyone downtown. So I know I sound like I'm preaching, but I feel like we're all on the same side of the, sometimes people can vigorously argue the same point, and I feel like that's where we are. And I'd like to see us all start working together and make something really fantastic that makes us all proud, and that facilitates the success of our restaurants and the Guild and all these great things that we have coming forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Klein?
Thank you. Jim, thank you, staff, and your team for the report. This has been, as Fran has eloquently stated, this is, it's a lifetime project for many lives. And so we're in the center of it now. The downtown parking structure, I want to respond just to, like, I think Dick Poe sent an email in earlier, and this was kind of when the specific plan was discussed, there was a visioning process to look at what ifs, and the idea being that if you could eliminate and find a different way to park, and that's if you can put it together in a structured area, if you can put it underground, and then incentivize the kind of opening up of retail and housing on top. And so you have more of a, it's like a rambling retail, and we had this kind of designed out in one of the charrettes and one of the parking areas. We didn't get into economics, you know, and the reality of it. It was the wishful thinking, vision part of it that was really fun. And so that idea, I think, is compelling, but, you know, the more you dig into this, the more you realize there's some hard realities to it. And I think we just, you know, we just need to be really aware of what those are and probably direct staff to address those early if we're going to look at this. And, you know, first off is, you know, are there new ways to incentivize? There are developers, to Kat's point, who are making the attempt to look at this adaptable housing type of model. Seattle LMN Architects, that's a massive building. It's the tallest building proposed in Seattle, one of the tallest on the West Coast. So, you know, there's a lot of incentive just in the idea that there's a lot of space and a lot of money behind it, like a quarter billion dollars or something involved. So it's a little bit different on the economics, but there have been a lot of, I think, pretty astute experts breaking down how to take a parking structure and adapt it to living space. And I do think that's probably where you're going to have to go with everything, the way the market's moving, everything has to be looking forward 50, 100 years out, and how can we reuse the space without having to rebuild it entirely. The challenges there are going to be the ramps, as Kirsten said, you know, they have steel removable ramps that have been proposed, they have this flat plates put in, they're designing it, in Boston they have one they're designing with elevators, right? So they don't want ramps, so they're going to have just elevators for the parking, so they can eliminate that before they have to. But the biggest challenge is plumbing. Every parking space unit has to have water planned and built for water and electricity as if a housing unit's going to be in there. So the consideration is that you have 150 to 250 square foot units. And there's really, I mean, it's fun to think about it, and it's intriguing to get into it. I'm just not sure we want to sink a lot of cost into it until we know what our realities are. And so, you know, maybe there's school design. Savannah College of Design did it in Atlanta, and they designed a complete transformation of one of these structures and actually went through with it on their campus. It's about 150 square foot units. They all have bathroom, kitchen, bed, seating area, and they're designed nicely. It's a question of efficacy long-term. Are there going to be a lot of people using these? My question would be, are people that use these types of spaces coming to the suburbs or going to the urban areas? And I don't think we could be considered an urban area. So it's, there's challenges on the marketability. Affordable housing, now that's different, and I think looking at affordable housing, there are other ways. There's tax credits you could give, you could call it future use tax credits if you want to try to do the transformation, start creating some tax credit programs. You could also look at, you know, strict policies that we could make. But there's also ways to partner with, you know, bigger government, you know, state and federal for funding. If Sean Hannity can do it, we all can. That's the way I figure. So we could build something together and build, you know, affordable housing. The entertainment side is the incentive, you know, looking at retail, the anchor that's going to pay for this. We could throw out a million of these. What I think would be best is having the approach of what can we do realistically on incentives, what types of income, what is the cost structure, what's the reality of some of this, you know, happening the way that we're talking about? Or are we looking at straight-up parking with dressing it up with some retail? You know, and so it's the cheap route that isn't as easy to transform, but it's the only way we can get it done. And I think that's my first recommendation, is let's run through the realities of economies and then take a step from there, looking at some of the other wishful thinking. But, you know, I'm on board with all of that. I just don't, I'm just not confident that we can get there in terms of how the economics work and whether we have the strings to make it happen. So let's just say I'm a supporter skeptically because of the economics, but I really think housing is needed, and we need affordable housing in any way we can down near transit.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. So just to provide my comments, so of course, thank you for the work. I think we're now entering this stage where we do have to look at, just to follow on to Councilmember Klein's comments, we've got to start looking at the numbers and the economics of, and I think of different type designs. I, you know, going back to 2010, 2011, I remember there was a parking study that talked about, and I think you had some of these numbers, 1,500 parking spaces in the downtown, including both the plazas and on-street parking. But I also recall that we had at that time somewhere around 400 parking permits issued, and those tend to be to employees of the various businesses. There's a very strong rationale, in my opinion, to put those permit parkers, to get employees into a parking garage, because what that now does is it opens up capacity in the surface lots for new customers, for downtown businesses. So, and you've got a little bit of, you've got a little bit of leeway in terms of, I think as you mentioned, you know, two blocks away, three blocks away, I think it's okay if you've got a permit parker who's going to be working all day. That also, so I kind of thinking, I kind of think of a potential 300 parking space garage. But now we have to look at, that's 300 net new spaces over above whatever units, whatever spaces that are going to be eliminated by whichever lot we're going to do, right? And I think we have to look at three different scenarios. We have to look at one scenario, which is parking only, to see what sort of size that looks. I know when we were talking about the specific plan, we were sort of thinking two stories down underground, three stories above, because we had a battle in 2012 around village character downtown and about not wanting the parking garages to be above the level of a three-story building, right, on Santa Cruz Avenue? Exactly, 38 feet. And it was a very intense discussion at that time. Now, times have changed, of course, and I think there's more appreciation of perhaps the need for trade-offs with higher density. So another alternative is looking at, well, what if we put affordable housing? Well, we have a BMR fund that would help pay for some of that. It may or may not pay for the garage. I'm not sure about that. And it may add height, it may require now going to four or five stories. On the other hand, you may be able to share some of those spaces. So I just don't know how that math or how that works out, but I think residents have to see that and have to understand that the trade-off for affordable housing or housing of any kind may be needing more height on it to do that. I don't know if that's the case, but I'm just, I think we've got to go through that analysis. And then the third alternative is some sort of, you know, theater or some sort of retail, and how that, how much that can contribute. I think that's an exciting prospect, because I do think a theater would have a shared use, it wouldn't add to the requirement for parking, it would be able to utilize the parking. But I don't think a two-screen theater is going to pay the $30 million or $20 million that it's going to take to make the garage, so, to build the garage. But I'd like to know how much it might be able to contribute. So I do think we're entering that phase where I think we need to see these three different designs, and then we'll be able to see which lot it'll fit. But I would recommend that as our next phase. Now, in terms of financing, I go back to the downtown specific plan fiscal impact analysis, which really basically talked about that hotel fees, hotel TOT, would help pay for, and one of the benefits that would come out of it would be in addition to, obviously, the underpass, but the parking garage was one of the key expenses in terms of what would be necessary. So, you know, I do look at with the new Park James Hotel coming online, that's about $750,000 a year, if I remember correctly, of TOT, assuming they meet their occupancy targets. I also recall, these numbers stick in various recesses. I'm not a very fun cocktail party companion, but I seem to remember our parking permits generate something like $300,000 a year, something like that, maybe plus or minus there. But if you combine it, you might be somewhere around a million a year coming from those two revenue sources. If I look at what current interest rates are when we were talking about the library, it's, you know, under 5% interest, you know, we're talking about potentially it could maybe able to support the debt service on perhaps somewhere between $15 to $20 million of financing of bonds. And the idea here is not to have to require any increased taxes, but rather to have the hotel taxes and, oh, and also when we were negotiating with 1,300 El Camino, Station 1,300, the public benefit, there was 2.3 million or something, that could be part of this downtown amenities fund that would help to fund. So I can see ways we can piece together some of this financing, and then if you supplement that with the, either the retail or theater, or I recall back a few years ago, the church was interested in potentially if a parking garage was on Lot 3. So there are some potential sources. I think we need to start delving more into it, see if that's realistic.
Could be a church and a theater.
Could be a church and a theater, which is an interesting combo.
Just to your point, those projects that I was mentioning before, they all have hotels included in those, which is a major funding source for those.
Right. And so anyway, that's my suggestions. Vice Mayor Mueller, you had a?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick point, and it's something we won't have a long discussion about it now, but I do want to make sure it's captured in the notes from tonight. And that's that I don't want us to get fixed on the idea that if we do a theater or an entertainment use, that it somehow must pencil to support the structure. Reason being, it's, I kind of see it akin to a park. It's something that enhances the quality of life of residents. Parks don't pay for themselves, and they don't pay for parking structures, but they certainly are a great place for people to gather. And I think a theater is in that same, a theater or entertainment use is along that same vein for the downtown.
Okay. Councilmember Carlton, did you have a follow-up?
No, I basically was going to agree. I don't think we're in any danger of it covering the cost. But we have had not only new the cost. But we have had not only new hotel rooms, but renovated hotel rooms, which reset the taxes and helped us a great deal as well. So I think you're right. I think we have a good combination that can work together.
But I think, I think we're at the stage where it'd be nice to see the three alternatives, to have some sort of design sketched out, some elevations so that folks, so that our community can see what the trade-offs are in terms of heights, in terms of the capacity. And I think it will help, help drive some consensus, I think. So I would recommend that.
My point in this is to also reiterate what Fran said. Let's just do it. Like, let's actually move forward and figure out how this can happen. And if we move forward and we find out this can't happen, at least we've tried, but I'm, let's stop talking about this and actually get things done.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions, Jim, or did we thoroughly confuse with our guidance or thoughts?
No, Mr. Mayor, I think that what I'm noodling on is really what our next step should be. And I think I'll talk with the city manager about, about that. It does sound like there are some kind of how do we pay for it questions that the council would like us to delve into a little bit more and get back to you on. It does seem like there's support for some kind of mixed use, or the potential for mixed use, and that affordable housing is, is near the top of the list from what we've heard from community input and from the council tonight.
May I ask a question? And it's actually, you can leave your light on, because it's going to be for you. Is this the item that, is this the sort of item that would progress along faster if you had a city council subcommittee on it? Are we ripe enough yet?
So I was going to jump, let me, I'll get to your point in a second. I'm going to dance a little bit and then get there. So one of the things that we're going to celebrate or recognize tonight is Jim Cogan's last day with the city is on Thursday. And as you know, his other key staff member, Megan Ravalinsky, is on maternity leave and will not be back, even though she's standing outside right now, and she hears me. She also will not be due back until July. And it leaves our brand-new analyst, Mike Noce, sort of standing alone in the breeze, literally, brand-new. He's a month into his job. So we don't have a lot of capacity to handle this for the time being. So back to Vice Mayor Mueller's point, there might be value in a council subcommittee. The only concern I have is I, I won't be able to staff it for a while. So we may have to take a pause, maybe have Jim craft up his final notes to figure out, kind of, kind of plot a strategy to move ahead. I can work with the subcommittee on what that strategy would be, but we may not see really hard tangible results until towards the end of the summer. Just to give a heads up, just, that's just the reality of our staffing.
I would be happy. I'm so passionate about getting this done. I would be completely happy to be on a subcommittee and do what, what might be necessary. And I think the first step really is to look at the FIA, look at some of the assumptions, look at, because this wasn't the EIR, this has been studied. Let's, let's take that and then move forward from there.
Yeah, my only concern is I don't have a "let's" in that statement, meaning I don't have people to do that right now. And my whole point is, we will, we will work together to figure this out. And all I'm suggesting is, we're going to have to take a little bit of a breather until we reconstitute the Housing and Economic Development team.
I also volunteer.
Great. I see two lights next to me. Thank you.
So, so we can bring back the appointment on the May 8 meeting for a subcommittee, because you need to agendize this, but we can certainly do that and have that as a, as an item in a couple of weeks.
Okay. I just want to make sure this doesn't get lost in the ethers.
It is the council's top six goals, and we talked about hell and high water to make these things happen, but when we have no staff left to do the work, and with due respect to Mike Noce, I mean, and there's a whole housing piece of this we have to deal with as well, meaning the Housing Commission, just to remind you all.
I think it's fair to say, all the council members are equally enthusiastic.
Councilmember Keith?
Peter, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to ask if there's any, I know, I understand what we're hearing on the staff capacity issue, but I wanted to understand if there is any interest in trying to look at a program to subsidize rides to downtown.
I.
Is there any interest in that, or is that not?
You're suggesting a program to subsidize rides downtown?
I'm interested in it because I, I think it is, it is something that we need to think about from a broader perspective on moving people. So, yeah.
And I know that the City of Mountain View and Councilmember Keith and I have talked about this in the past, the City of Mountain View is, is in the process of trying to move its program forward. I think it's had some challenges in sort of getting to that point where Lyft and Uber are sort of in agreement. But I can work with the city manager of Mountain View to understand where their program is. Instead of reinventing the wheel, let's try to mimic maybe what they've done.
Yes, that's, that's what I am proposing. And I talked to you about this last year, too, Alex, to try and get this going. But I know Mountain View still hasn't incorporated it yet, and there are some, yeah, some things they're looking at still. I've spoken with some of the council people there. But I would like, if we have three people who are interested in this, is that something we could move forward on, or how would you propose looking at this?
I think, I'll let the city manager kind of noodle on it. One idea might be for that to be part of the subcommittee.
It certainly could be a part of the subcommittee, sort of focus. And again, the concern about all this is, I'm just going to go back to capacity, and I don't mean to keep beating that drum, but I don't want to create an expectation that we can do something that we can't execute on. So until I get my team rebuilt, we're going to have to take a bit of a breather. But we can add these to sort of the list, to the package of downtown parking opportunities, and see what, what does or doesn't work for the moment.
Got it. Vice Mayor Mueller, did you?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, so my only, and I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm for looking at it. My, that's great. My only question is, we still, and maybe, I just am asking for clarification. We still have a pretty robust shuttle program that takes people to the downtown?
We have a, we have a strong shuttle program. We have a shopper program as well as a commuter program. How well it's utilized, I don't know, but we do have a program, Vice Mayor Mueller, you're right, and that might be something to also look at as a way of.
And this goes back a ways to when I was on the Transportation Commission, but I thought my memory was if someone called, it was almost on demand. Like, if you had, if you had an issue, it could come and pick you up.
I'm, I'm looking for anyone. We'll find out for you.
Councilmember Mueller, that, through the chair, that was, through the mayor, that was my understanding as well. But I understood that that was previously for, the intention maybe was for the elderly or people that had other issues.
Let us confirm. Okay, so these are all great ideas. And, and let's take it now to potentially, I think, a subcommittee. But I know a lot of people are patiently waiting for us to, to get to our proclamations. So if I, if I can, why don't I now call our regular meeting to order? And I want to thank everyone who arrived back at 7:00 for patiently waiting here. I wanted to introduce my fellow colleagues. So as I mentioned, Councilmember Klein on my right, Councilmember Carlton next to me, Vice Mayor Mueller, and Councilmember Keith is on the phone. Over on this side, we have city manager Alex McIntyre, city attorney Bill McClure. We have city clerk Judy Aaron, assisted by deputy city clerk Elena Harada. If I can ask all of you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have several very important proclamations this evening. I'd like to, I'm going to go down to the podium there. And first, I'd like to invite Arlinda Heineck up.
I'm so sad. I'm already getting teary-eyed. All right. Arlinda Heineck is our Director of Community Development. And after a very long and illustrious career, which I'll talk about in the proclamation, she is retiring. And, and so allow me to read the proclamation, recognizing Arlinda Heineck. Whereas, Arlinda, Linda Heineck, has served as Menlo Park's Associate Planner, Senior Planner, and Director of Community Development. And whereas Linda Heineck is a trusted leader in the organization, demonstrating a high level of professionalism, technical expertise, sound judgment, and integrity, and is respected by her colleagues and the community. And whereas Linda Heineck has been a valuable mentor and coach in the professional growth of her staff, and serves as a role model of commitment to public service. And whereas Linda Heineck contributed to the creation of the city's first below-market-rate housing ordinance and guidelines, which has increased the affordable housing supply in the city. And whereas Linda Heineck led the planning review process for the 145-unit Vintage Oaks subdivision on Middlefield Road, which incorporated 14 affordable housing units, the 47-unit Hamilton Park subdivision, which required the assemblage of 14 former light industrial properties, and resulted in 20 affordable housing units at a new city park in Bell Haven and the office development at 2725 to 2775 Sand Hill Road. And whereas Linda Heineck has been a key eye for detail and a clear sense of the big picture, and has supported her team in navigating through complex planning projects, including the Quadress Campus Expansion, Lane Wood Subdivision, Morgan Lane Subdivision, Rosewood Hotel, Menlo Gateway, and the Facebook Campus Expansion Project, and the revitalization of downtown and the El Camino Corridor, the downtown specific plan. And whereas Linda Heineck played an instrumental role in the creation and success of the El Camino Real Downtown Vision Plan in 2008, and subsequent adoption of the specific plan in 2012. And whereas Linda Heineck was the 2017 recipient of the Menlo Park Chamber of Commerce Golden Acorn Award for Professional Excellence, which recognized her illustrious career with the City of Menlo Park, including being a key player in not one but two general plan updates, which serves as the city's blueprint for future development. And whereas Linda Heineck has always placed the interests and needs of the overall community first, and has dedicated her career to enhancing the quality of life and built environment for the residents and businesses of Menlo Park. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Peter O'Taki, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the city council and the city, congratulate and express my sincere gratitude to Linda Heineck for her loyalty and service over the past 31 years. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
So I just, I just want to say, it has been a great pleasure working with you over the last several years. Not only have you been this sort of steady captain of our, of our ship with a lot of different projects and growth and, and issues, you not only did, did that with great expertise, but always with a smile on your face. And I always appreciate when I look over and, and your, I also wanted to comment about your leadership and mentoring your staff. I think you've got a great team that, that you've built. And so, so you have had a lasting positive impact on Menlo Park that I hope you can feel proud of. I know we all do. And so I want to congratulate you now on your well-deserved retirement, and hope you enjoy it. And please come back and visit us. So, all right, great. You guys want to come down and let's?
Thank you.
to recognize Jim Cogan, who is moving to become Assistant City Manager in the City of Paso Robles. Whereas Jim Cogan has served as Menlo Park's Housing and Economic Development Manager for five years. And whereas Jim dedicated himself to enhancing the way we enjoy our city when we visit downtown for shopping, dining, and entertainment by heading and supporting projects such as Santa Cruz Street Cafe Program, Downtown Garage, and Specific Plan Implementation. And whereas Jim took on the housing program to implement the strategies for one of the most expensive real estate areas in the country, with an enormous restraint of balancing the demands of the community, developments, and businesses. Whereas Jim championed affordable housing programs, such as the Two Mid-Pen Housing Projects, which combined brought to the city over 230 new affordable units with the help of 10 million in below-market-rate funds. And whereas Jim developed, championed, and supported many community events, such as the Block Party, the city holiday tree lighting, family fitness extravaganza, wine walk, off-the-grid food trucks, and Menlo movie series. And whereas, with his magnetic charisma, Jim has established himself as a reliable resource to community members, organizations, and businesses in our city. And whereas Jim Cogan shepherded the Sister City program and completed the development of the Sister City two-year work plan, along with coordinating numerous visits from the Sister City delegations. And whereas Jim will also be known for his unmatched sense of humor, his passion for motorcycles, the New England Patriots, and for extending the craze of fidget spinners in Menlo Park. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Peter O'Taki, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the city council, expressed sincere, and city, expressed sincere thanks and appreciation to Jim Cogan for his dedication and exemplary service to the City of Menlo Park. Jim? Thank you.
I'd like to ask Diane Bailey, there, there you are. I've got, I've got my notes. Diane Bailey is, leads Menlo Spark. And I'm very pleased to collaborate with Menlo Spark on this. They've done great work. So I'm going to let Diane, why don't you provide a little background on it? And if you'd like to read the recipients, and I'll be happy to provide them their certificates. So Diane, why don't you go ahead and trade places.
Thank you so much, Mayor O'Taki, for this opportunity. It's really an honor. And Mayor, you and the City of Menlo Park have really been outstanding leaders on the environment, and I appreciate that. And so this year on Earth Day, we really wanted to celebrate the exceptional environmental leaders, youth leaders, as you can see, and education leaders, and residents across town. And so we've been running a green challenge to help people lower their carbon footprints. And La and Tredah Middle School took up the challenge, and we're really proud of the great work that they've done. And so we wanted to say thank you to the Menlo Green Challenge winners, who have taken the most climate actions to reduce their carbon impacts to the community and make the City of Menlo Park a much more sustainable place to live. We wanted to recognize their contributions. And first, I wanted to recognize Jerry Griffith. He is the winner of the overall Menlo Green Challenge with the most climate actions taken across the city, and lowering his household's carbon footprint to almost nothing. And so thank you very much, Jerry. So next is Erica Minor. She's student president of the Students for Environmental and Educational Development Services. That's SEEDs, an after-school group at Menlo Atherton High School. I wanted to recognize her for out- I wanted to recognize her for outstanding student environmental leadership for everything she's done to make MA High School a much more sustainable place, supporting composting programs, reusing, recycling, and really just doing an all-around great job to activate students at the high school. Next, I wanted to recognize Alexander Fistner. He's a seventh grader at La Entrada Middle School, and he really helped get the Menlo Green Challenge started, including with actions he's taking on behalf of his own household and took the initiative to help get that challenge started at the middle school. Thank you, Alexander. Next, I wanted to acknowledge Ms. Whitney Thwait. She's a science teacher at La Entrada Middle School, and this is the second year that she's running the Menlo Green Challenge at the middle school, and it's been really exciting to watch, I would say, hundreds of climate actions across six different science classes come in and watch these students compete to lower their carbon footprint as much as they can. Thank you, Whitney. And I also wanted to acknowledge Annabelle Hopkins. She's a seventh grader at La Entrada, and she won the challenge at the school with the most climate actions taken, which was a very tough competition among those seventh graders. Nice job, Annabelle. Thank you. So lastly, I don't think there's anyone here from Oak Knoll School. Oak Knoll has a really exceptional environmental leadership... Oh, come on up, please. Oak Knoll has an exceptional environmental leadership program. They have those students trained at the lunch hour to do an awesome job sorting the trash, the compost, the recycling, and doing really fun Earth Day activities and activities throughout the year. I want to acknowledge Gwen Solomon. She's a science aide and learning garden organizer and instructor. Nicole Scott is a school counselor. I don't think she's here tonight. Carol Brubaker is a fourth-grade teacher. Thank you very much. Thank you. And lastly, Mary Kelly is a parent volunteer, and she's just done an amazing job stepping up and helping out with the environmental education program. Thank you to all of you. You guys are the leaders of our environmental movement, making Menlo Park a much more sustainable and better place to live. Thank you so much for all of your actions on behalf of the environment.
Great. I will say, for La Entrada, go leopards; for Oak Knoll, go otters; for MA, go bears. All right. We also have a couple of additional certificates of recommendation or recognition for green businesses. The San Mateo County Green Business Program is a partnership of sustainability agencies, the county, and utilities working together to promote small and medium-sized businesses that operate in an environmentally friendly manner. The expansion of this program is a strategy in Menlo Park's Climate Action Plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and aligns with the city's recently adopted Community Zero Waste Plan. The San Mateo County Green Business Program is the local chapter of a larger California green business program. To date, the California Green Business Program has resulted in a reduction of 970,000 metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions and over 1.4 million tons of waste diverted statewide. This translates to $41 million in utility savings for certified California green businesses. On average, a certified California green business saved 278 metric tons of CO2 and close to $11,000 last year, contributing to both the environmental and economic health of their communities. The following four businesses were certified in 2016 and 2017. And let's see, we have American Printing and Copy, and we have Heart on Your Wrist, New Doll Enterprise, and Texture by Next Issue. I don't know if they're representatives here, but please, and if not, we'll make sure to get you your certificates. So, hi, welcome. Oh, great, honey. Okay. And what is your name?
Beth.
Okay. Beth Billman from Heart on Your Wrist. I think we have... Allow me to present you both the county certificate and also our city certificate. Thank you very much. And, hi.
Ron Newdel.
Ron, oh, Ron Newdel. Okay, great. Ron Newdel from New Doll Exercise Enterprises. Hold on. And there we go. Here is the city certificate recognition and the county certificate. So, thank you very much. We appreciate your work. And let me provide that here. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Let me turn the podium around, and we will next have public comment. So if you'd like to speak to public comment, there are cards back on the rear tables. I'd like to invite you to make sure you handed those public comment cards to the city clerk. I'm going to quickly run up there, and we'll start. Okay. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject. Oh, wait a second. I've got one announcement I'd like to make before we go into public comment, which is it is Councilmember Carlton's birthday tonight. So I am not going to sing "Happy Birthday" because that will turn off everyone who might be watching, but I do want to wish her a happy birthday and enjoying her birthday with us as opposed to her family. So we have a couple of cupcakes I'd like to have a share up here. So, wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you so much. That's really sweet.
Okay.
For those that saw earlier, I disappeared because my kids came by to hug me, wish me a happy birthday before they went home and did homework and went to bed. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here tonight. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. We have Sue Connolly, followed by Helen Greco. Sue, good evening. Thank you. It's nice to see you.
Good evening, Maritaki, and happy birthday, Kat. So first of all, I want to commend the council. I think that we work all together as various groups in the community to try to find out something that's equitable for all in representing the really diverse community and interests that we have. That being said, I know that we had the library sighting, which was moved from the agenda for tonight, but I would like to have... I'd want to go on record as having a serious concern, a very grave concern, for the process to date. And notably, I have to say grossly inaccurate reporting of the community feedback. I'm very, very concerned by that. The media coverage can also concur with what we're talking about. There seems to be a very definite bias toward the loyal site without having any justification for cost. You know, that's always kind of, as any big endeavor is, you weigh the costs of the different options. But my chief concern is the inaccurate reporting, and the people who are taking the notes were either A, library staff members, or B, members of the architectural firm that would be benefiting from this endeavor. So I want to go unnoticed that the bias is evident, and I really would like to have your judicious evaluation of this process, notably that we can look at all the contingencies of the two different sites, most importantly, the funding and the costs. And when we were querying the staff on some fairly significant questions, the answer was, "We don't know. We don't know." And I think as we're talking about with the parking garage, there are a lot of things that need to be taken into consideration before we hasten to a decision. So, and also, the library commission, which I intended the last meeting, because they were of diverse opinions, they could not weigh in on making a decision. So I'm just asking for real wisdom and really listening to what the community is saying. And the question kind of first and foremost is, given the objectives and needs of our community, is this big library project even needed and required? And funding being the big question, and also with Ariaga coming up with some of the funding, my question to the library staff and anyone else doing this development is, is that money going right back into Ariaga's pockets? So are we coming up with an expensive project to help someone who's a developer benefiting from this? Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. Helen Greco, followed by Adina Levin. Good evening, Helen.
Hi. Good evening, councilmembers and the mayor. I'm Helen Greco from California Common Cause, and I'm here to speak on the item on your consent calendar. As you recall, we... Common Cause is an organization that's very dedicated to fair districting, and we have a wonderful website, localredistricting.com, and we've been participating with your amazing residents and your city council and clerk. And now we have the advisory commission being adopted, and, you know, yay for us, it worked very well. So I just really wanted to thank you all and thank the residents and say I'm happy I'm the Northern California organizer, and I run around Northern California assisting residents doing these kinds of processes, and it's very rewarding work. And I will leave you by saying that within two short years, you'll be starting another process, and it would be our great hope that it's an independent redistricting commission, which is the model that we most admire. Thank you very much and happy birthday.
Great. Thank you, Helen. Adina Levin, followed by Dr. Mary Streshley.
Good evening, councilmembers. Adina Levin, on the Menlo Park Transportation Commission or Complete Streets Commission, whatever we're calling it this month, and wanted to take the opportunity to report on something that was of interest to one of the subcommittees that we're going to be bringing to the commission and maybe bringing to the council if the commission is interested as well. So there... And this was triggered by a bill in Sacramento that just passed through a key committee. It's AB 2363, and it gives local cities some additional discretion in setting speeds, setting speed limits. The California has had a fairly restrictive law, 85th percentile rule, saying that the speed is required to be set within a certain level of how fast people are driving already. Menlo Park's new general plan does some, you know, different thinking about how to classify our streets based not only on the use of moving vehicles, but also considering other uses as neighborhood streets, as places to gather, places to shop, and so on. And we've been inspired by a campaign that was done in the UK called 20 is Plenty, and that's an idea that on neighborhood streets where people walk, walk their dogs, you know, elderly people walk down the streets, and so on, a speed that is, you know, really very compatible with neighborhood use is the most appropriate. But, and to potentially have goals to design the streets in order to support that slow speed. But before people are driving at that slow speed now, we can't post a different speed. And so I am actually reaching out to some of the bicycle and pedestrian organizations that are supporting this to really understand exactly what it is and what it might allow us to do if it passes. And we are really interested in exploring this type of 20 is plenty-type campaign for our streets in order to really encourage streets to be designed and for drivers to drive at a speed on neighborhood streets that's really compatible with enjoying those streets for people of all ages and abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. Dr. Mary Streshley, Superintendent of the Sequoia High School District, welcome this evening, followed by Osnaat Lowenthal.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Happy birthday. Mine is in a week. Big 5-0.
Tar.
What did you say?
Tar.
Yes, yes. Okay. I just wanted to give you a little update since the last time I spoke in front of you. I want to just continue to speak about our continued interest in collaborating with both Facebook and City of Menlo Park around the development projects that are being planned and will have an impact on Sequoia Yun High School District. Our interest is to be considered and included in these important conversations that have undeniable consequences and hopefully positive effect on our district. Since we last spoke, we have actively attempted to engage with Facebook representatives and remain optimistic that they will sit down with us and soon talk specifics about mutually beneficial solutions. We're scheduling a tour of TID, our new school in East Menlo Park, and some other conversations. As of today, our parents and community continue to organize around this issue, and we have scheduled a joint board meeting with Ravenswood to discuss our mutual interests. For our parents and community, we really want to reiterate it's not about a housing development project, rather, it's a concern around long-term success, continued success of our educational programs. We've been clear from the beginning that we're not opposed to the housing development and encourage all the solutions that are in the Connect Menlo Plan, but we cannot do so at the expense of one of the best school districts in California. Got a lot of great schools around here, which I just recently have become privileged enough to lead and speak on behalf of. I'd also like to acknowledge the letter we sent that requests our district be made aware and writing of any proceedings involved with the M2 zoning project. This project will also have an impact on our TID, on our district, because it neighbors very, very closely to the new school that's under construction right now. So we also have interests in making sure that's a... Has a lot of collaborative space for our students. And it's just our intent to keep the lines of communication open so that our agency can continue to collaborate and resolve things. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. Osnaat Lowenthal, followed by Pamela Jones. Good evening. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak again. And first of all, thank you so much for taking your time to sit here, even on your birthday, and taking all this time. I know it's very time-consuming, and thank you for representing us and all of us. So I really did not expect to be here again. I was here a few months ago, I think it was July of last year, when I happened to discover that the library, the new library, is supposed... One of the options was on top of the current childcare, where my daughter goes right now, where my two older children went, and which we love and appreciate. I was very concerned. I mentioned it. I thought it was prematurely to even raise it, but I did. And I sort of expected somebody to make an official outreach to the parents on where the site was actually supposed to be built. To my surprise, nobody, nobody from the library or staff or really no one outreach to the parents. I have to say that despite the lack of outreach and because I happened to see that there were sighting meetings happening, and unfortunately, I completely missed the first one that was in December, I happened to see that there is one going on in January, and then in February, I alerted parents. No one had any idea that this project is going on. No one had any idea that this project is going on. Some parents did come to those siting meetings. And I as well attended the second meeting. I attended the third siting meeting. And on the third siting meeting, luckily, the site on top of the MCC or the childcare facilities luckily was dropped. So, I didn't expect to find myself here again. I'm here to speak again because during that process, and I have to repeat what the previous speaker before me said very eloquently, I am really confused on how this process is going. I questioned the process. I am really disappointed on the way it's going. A lot of misinformation. Facts are omitted. Facts are not complete when they're sent to the parents. Just yesterday, we got a memo with some facts being stated, other facts being completely omitted, which completely misrepresent the situation. The siting, if you are there, you would see that most people prefer the Alma site for various reasons, the trees, a lot of reasons, the traffic. And yet, the staff is going to recommend the Loyal site, which I completely don't understand. So, thank you for listening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Pamela Jones, followed by Katie Baruzzi. Hi, Pamela.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, Mayor Protem Mueller, and council members and staff. I'm Pamela Jones, a member of the San Mateo County Voter Education and Outreach Committee. And I wanted to let you know that the League of Women Voters, South San Mateo County, are doing two seminars this week, candidate, excuse me, candidate forums. I left the information in the back. One's tomorrow night, that is with the two sheriffs, and people running for sheriff. And then also on Saturday, the San Mateo County Superintendent of Schools. Both of these will be at the Woodside Road United Methodist Church in Redwood City. And there will also be a presentation on the Voters' Choice Act. Next week, there will be two presentations. One at the Bellhaven Branch Library on Monday, May 9. And then on Wednesday, excuse me, Monday, May 7. And then on Wednesday, May 9, here at the main library, there will be information about the Voters' Choice Act and what it means to us as residents. And we have an election coming up in June, June 5. So, many of you have probably received a postcard, if you're a registered voter, explaining to you what the new system is, which is different because we can't show up at our polling places anymore. We'll either be mailing our ballots in or we'll be going to vote centers or using drop boxes. So, I also placed a flyer in the back that looks like this, that talks about the systems so that people have an understanding what it's going to be. Because there are those of us that we traditionally only go to polls. At any rate, I hope that you will come to the candidates forum and that you will let your neighbors know about the events at the two libraries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. Vice Mayor Mueller, did you have a follow-up?
I just had, was that pamphlet created by the registrar office or one you created?
This one?
The one that you left in the back of the room?
This one?
Uh, yeah.
Yes. This is an approved.
Great. That's, I just want to double-check and make sure.
Yes. No, this is all approved information. The information is down at the bottom, linked to San Mateo County. And all of the work that the organizations are doing is through the county.
Excellent.
Great. Thank you, Pam. Katie Baruzzi, followed by Sean Mulcahy. Hi, Katie.
Hi, Katie Baruzzi. Happy birthday, Kat. Once again, I'm representing Jen Wallison, who's departed to get some sanity and some sleep. But on behalf of Jen and for parents for Safe Routes, I wanted to give a brief report on the training that we did this weekend and also to thank Mayor Otaki for coming and joining us for part of it. It was really valuable for, I think, for Mayor Otaki to see what we were doing and also for the kids to see that the mayor cares enough to show up. That's really cool. So, thank you, especially on the short notice. So, very briefly, we had 10 kids. We had a training led by two league-certified instructors that we contracted through Wheel Kids Palo Alto, which also runs Great Summer Camps. The kids rode from Hillview through downtown Menlo Park along the Oak Grove by Kraut to Burgess Park. And then they went to Cafe Zoe in the Willows. And then they came back, and we debriefed in Burgess Park. Along the way, they picked up swag that was donated generously by Ranir from Menlo Velo, including bells and blinky lights. They have now Wheel Kids t-shirts. They learned things like how to signal and look over your shoulder when you're turning. They learned the appropriate way to take the lane when there's not a bike lane and how to move through traffic efficiently. And they also learned how to ride single file. It was a great experience. We actually have already heard from one parent who wants to replicate the training for other people. However, this did expose some deficits in our system. So, one thing I'll note is that we don't have a complete bike infrastructure right now. There are definitely gaps. One of the noticeable gaps is actually when you're coming back from the Willows and you have to get from Willows across Middlefield and into Lynnfield Oaks. What the kids are doing right now when they're coming is some weird thing involving riding on sidewalks. What we did was cross by the fire station. And I'd like to highlight that that crosswalk by the fire station, which we already know is kind of sketchy even with the blinky lights, actually, the blinky lights don't work. So, it's, you're crossing four lanes of traffic going 35 miles an hour. You're a pedestrian or cyclist. That's already terrifying. I mean, we're basically talking about El Camino speeds here. But also now, the pedestrian beacon doesn't work. I also think one training like this for a small group of kids is obviously a drop in the bucket. And we need to be doing this citywide. Palo Alto does. I think we can, I'm excited about our Safe Routes to School program. So, I want to thank, in addition to Ranir and to Mayor Otaki and to Peter from Wheel Kids, I'd like to thank Kathleen from Cafe Zoe, who generously donated lemonade and brownies, which are the best brownies I've ever had, and cookies. And let's see what else. We do have a training at Hillview this week that requires more volunteers. So, I just want to put that out there. And anybody who wants to learn more about it can contact me or Jen Wallison offline. But thank you for showing up. Thank you for your support of Safe Bike Routes and for Safe Bike Training in Menlo Park. And we'll keep moving. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Katie. And please pass along my thanks and encouragement to roll out and scale up that training program. I know my son learned a lot about how to bike across town. You know, they're used to going to and from elementary school through, you know, side streets and residential streets, but actually bike on Santa Cruz Avenue, on Oak Grove, on a lot of busy streets, crossing El Camino. It's something that I know he learned a lot by doing. And so, I definitely want to encourage that. Good evening, Sean Mulcahy.
Hi, Peter Otaki. Hi, Mayor. And happy birthday, Rich Klein. He's a customer of mine. Good customer. I think we took care of him. So, I missed a meeting last night about the guild, the renovation. And I don't know where it's at, if it's already moving through. I don't know. What I do know is they're right next to my business, okay? So, there's going to be probably a lot of construction. I'm sure we're going to have to figure out how that's all going to work out. Parking is already a nightmare, okay? I had a customer today, she's like, and they're doing some work right behind our building and all these trucks are coming right by, right? And they're blocking El Camino. And it's like, they don't have a place to park. And I, they're just trying to do their job. But I'm just, I'm really concerned, okay? I've been in this, I've been in this area over 15 years, raising a family like most, all of us have some kids. This is my area. This is my town. You know what I mean? I've put in a long time. I want to raise my kids here. I want to have a business here. I run a good business. I try and work really, really hard. If parking becomes bad and construction, and I'm trying to talk to somebody in my business and you got jackhammers going, and they won't be able to hear me, right? They might walk out, right? There could be a lot of lost business. And I don't want to say, could it happen? Could I go out of business? That could happen in any business. And remember, nobody goes into business to go out of business. I'm all for looking in the future and something that could benefit when it is maybe done and more people coming around that may be our clientele. I know it's going to be sometimes in the evenings. But we have to, I mean, have you thought about like the construction, where these trucks are going to park? And being on El Camino, where are they going to go? Where are they going to demolish it? Where are they, where are they going to park those things? And is the construction all during the day? Is it going to be at night? Has all this been considered? And I know I missed last night, so I'm not aware. I've heard from some other merchants near me, like they're concerned too. What else, what might, that you know? How is that going to be done?
Well, we can't respond, you know, as part of, it's also a non-agenda item. But I will say that it's still going through the planning stage. But we will definitely share your concerns to them. I know they're very.
So, yeah, those concerns were expressed last night and are coming to us through the process.
Okay. And there's a next meeting about this next month? Or is that where?
The meeting will be noticed. The next meeting is the city council meeting. I believe that's May 22.
May 22?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Great. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. Why don't we move to commission vacancies? And let's, we have a couple of, I think we have one public comment, Lynn Bramlett.
So, I wish you a happy birthday too. And a little over 22 years ago, I had the good fortune to marry my husband and be married to him and to be able to live in Menlo Park. And I remember how thrilled I was to be able to walk to our library, the library just over here, because I've always been an avid reader. And when I became a public high school English teacher, I had even more reason to go because I started buying books from the friends for my classroom library, a huge classroom and a huge classroom library. I probably had 2,000, 3,000 books, and I'm not kidding because I have pictures. And the first thing I did was get those kids reading because of the research. So, when I would go to the library, I kept seeing notices of meetings being canceled due to a lack of a quorum. And I didn't know what a commissioner did. But I decided to apply to help my city and to help the library. And this was although I was working full-time and midway through a master's degree in English. So, in serving, as I finished my, you know, first, my four years serving, I've served from August 2014 until this month, I've learned a couple of things. Number one, the intention is good for these commissions. I think they're an important way of getting the public, they're set up to bring the public in, have accountability, get the public involved, independent source of information for council. So, the intention is very good. But I found the reality has been different. And I don't mean just perhaps for the library commission. And of course, I'm speaking for myself. But as I talk to others serving on these commissions, I think we have a problem. And I think the problem is that the advisory role is not there because decisions are too often made before they even hit the commission. So, we need to build in some changes. They can be treated as rubber stamp groups. And the role, I think, was written by staff, perhaps with your, you know, blessing. But that kind of explains why they seem so aimed at staff's interests and I would say not the public good. So, I think they all need reform. I think the, or at least many of them do. I'll put it that way. The public should be involved in that. I think the roles need benchmarking with other cities. And the agenda should focus on strategic matters. Thank you.
Okay. Lynn, thank you. I certainly know that we, as a council, very much appreciate all of the work that and times spent by our commission volunteers and certainly want to make sure that they have a good experience and know that their input is very much welcomed by us. We do have a lot of very thorny, challenging issues. And while we certainly do our best up here to try and address them and analyze them with staff's assistance in a short 40-minute period or something, the fact that matters, we benefit greatly from the work that's done at the commissions. So, we certainly want to, and we do appreciate the fact that staff puts a lot of time in supporting the commissions. And as we heard, we've got, you know, staff shortages. So, certainly, we do value and appreciate those who are both applying and serving on our commissions and want them to have a good experience, so. Vice Mayor Mueller, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say, and I know you, Lynn, I know how thoughtful you are. But I did want to, and I think you may have overstated one thing. I do want to recognize the fact that we all have differences of opinion. We have differences of opinion here on the dais. Sometimes we have different staff, the people on the dais, or one person on the dais, or two may have a difference of opinion with staff. And sometimes, all of us have varying opinions with commissioners. But I think that the one thing that I've always seen is that everybody who has that opinion has that opinion expressed for the public good. So, I just wanted to make that, make that one statement because I know you wouldn't want to leave it that way. And I wouldn't want us, I know that over time, we all get, there are times, and I've been, myself, been frustrated at various levels of all of those componentry. But I've never doubted for a second that everyone pursuing what they're pursuing, that they passionately believe it's to serve the public. It's just we don't always all see things the same way when we do it, so. And certainly, that doesn't mean that we can't be all more transparent about it, frankly, at every level, so.
Great. Thank you. So, with that, we have a fair number of vacancies to fill this evening. And I'd like to turn it over to our city clerk. And Judy, please proceed. I don't know, when we're doing the nominations, do you want us to, do you want, do you want to do the request to speak button? Or do you want me to kind of pick or start? How would you like to proceed on that?
And when looking at the nominations, I'll just have you verbalize who each council member is nominating or if they're nominating. When it comes to the voting, I will ask you to raise your hands, except for Councilmember Keith. You can go ahead and vocalize your vote.
Okay, great. So, we'll start with the Complete Streets Commission. If my eyesight serves me well.
Correct. And we have.
Let me switch over to the other screen here. We have four vacancies, if that's correct.
Correct.
I'd like to take the opportunity to nominate Betsy Nash. Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, I'll nominate Adina Levin. I know it's not constant practice, but we try to encourage, you know, the incumbents when they seek another turn. And they've been doing a good job. We try to encourage that as much as possible. So, that's why I'm.
I'd like to nominate Lydia.
And hold on, I think Ray had his light.
I was going to nominate Phil, so it's fine.
Okay. Ray's nominating Phil. And Councilmember Carlton.
I'll nominate William Brown. But I would like to make a request in the future. I remember being surprised back when I was on Parks and Rec that there was a gentleman on Parks and Rec who was reappointed, who'd shown up once the year before. And I know that we have things in place now to deal with that. But usually, when we reappoint people, we also get to look at how many times they showed up because it does help us if we have someone who really wants to be there, but they can't because of their work or what have you. It helps us know who's showing up and who's not. And that's not included in this report. And that makes me very nervous that we don't have that information. Have we looked and are we 100% sure that every single person we're reappointing has met the minimum number of meetings that we've required?
I unfortunately don't have that information, no. I think it's an excellent point and probably something we should look for when doing appointments in the future to provide that to you ahead of this.
Well, then I put it to either the mayor or the city manager. What do we do if there's someone who we're not aware of right now, but they have, they've attended one meeting last year because of whatever personal reason? And then we reappoint them? And then we think, gee, that's awkward because we have this rule. And if we don't enforce it, at which point do we table this until the next meeting when we have? enforce it, at which point do we table this until the next meeting when we have this information to make a informed decision?
The council does get an annual report on commission attendance. That is, I think, done at the end of the calendar year, if memory serves me right. So you have seen those who attended, you may be giving call, one of the commissioners objected to the minutes showing that he was not at a meeting when he was indeed at a meeting, so we went through that round with that. So we do, we do do an annual report to you. We don't happen to tie it, though, to this particular project or effort.
That was four months ago.
I guess so, yeah.
And I remember there are a few people that hadn't really attended that much, and it would be interesting to have that information to know, have they pulled it together and been able to show up to more meetings, or, you see what I'm saying?
I do.
If we're going to make a rule, we should enforce it.
I understand.
Are you making a motion to continue the item?
I'm putting it up for discussion. I really feel like it's more fair to everyone. Now, my gut feeling is that we're going to come back, look at it, and say, yep, everybody attended, we're good. But I'll feel terrible if there's someone who is available to attend every meeting who's equally as passionate, and we appoint someone else. Do you see what I'm saying?
So I'd be fine with, for the item, for the, for the commissions where we have, like, environmental quality, we have three vacancies, we have three people who applied.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
We're the same way with Park and Rec Commission. We've all gone through fairly amount, a fair amount of scrutiny on Planning Commission. I'm fine with continuing the others if that would, if you feel more comfortable with that.
I'd feel more comfortable if that's okay. I could go either way. I'm not feeling really strong about it, but it just seems fair that if we have the role, we should, we should follow it.
Well, I would like to proceed with also Finance and Audit Committee, just based on, I know the track record of the one...
You've been in the meeting.
You've been in the meetings.
Yeah, I've been in the meetings.
Okay, that's fine.
So I'd be fine. So which ones are you thinking should be deferred?
So that means we'd continue Complete Streets. Environmental quality, we would do. Finance, we would do.
Planning.
And planning, we would do.
The only concern I'd have with planning, and I'm checking, I'm checking really quickly, I'm gonna stare across the room.
Although I worry about leaving library open, because we have four vacancies.
Correct. When's the next Planning Commission meeting? And if these terms are expired, are they then allowed to serve into their new term?
We're gonna cover planning.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought you were waiting for that one.
We're gonna cover Park and Rec, because there's only one.
I'm also just getting a text from Nikki DeGaya telling me that the four people you just nominated for Complete Streets have indeed attended all their, have met the minimums.
Well, at which point, we're only not doing housing, so we might as well go forward. But in the future, please, 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 let's make sure that we have that.
Well, we're also not doing library.
Oh, so do you want to do housing and library next time? Or I don't care.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay, and I did hear Council Member Keith, did you want to make a comment?
I just wanted to make, I think I understand what Alex just said, that there are four people who are on the commission, all have great attendance, and that there's one person who's not, that the four that we've nominated who are on the commission have good attendance. Is that right, Alex?
That's what I'm told, yes.
And that's for library? Correct?
No, I thought that was four.
That was Complete Streets.
That was Complete Streets, okay.
We're doing everything but housing and library.
Okay, so not housing and library, all right. So Complete Streets Commission, I...
Wait, 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 wait. Library has four vacancies. If we don't fill that, are we actually delaying the library being able to meet for a month?
Well, next week.
Have to see when their next scheduled meeting is.
Okay, all right.
Well, and the other thing is, on the library, so of these candidates for the library commission, are any currently serving on the commission?
No.
No, none of them are.
All right, so let's...
So that's a non-issue.
Attendance is not an issue.
Yeah, so EQC is all new members. There are no, there are no one coming back.
So, okay, so I think we can go ahead.
All right, let's just go ahead and do it, but please take my point that it would be nice in the future to have that...
For next time, we will make sure that...
To make sure it's clean.
We show attendance.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so Complete Streets Commission, I think we've got one, two, three, four, five candidates nominated. Any additional candidates?
No, I, the applications stay in, and so that they roll in if there's an opportunity. Hopefully, these people will stay in.
Yes, that's right. Let me reiterate that we appreciate everybody who applies. We keep those applications and encourage them to, and invite them to reapply, because we do have vacancies that come up.
May I make a...
Yes.
Someone sent us an email and said, why do you take people applying when you have the same number of people being reappointed? And it's because we do keep them on record, and it does put them on our radar so that we get to know them better, because it always makes us feel better when we see someone, we get to know them as people and not names on a piece of paper. So just because someone doesn't get appointed, doesn't mean, doesn't mean that you've kind of started on the process.
Okay, Judy, go ahead.
So for the voting section, I will read the name. You will raise your hands if you are voting for that person to be appointed. Three votes will appoint them, and we'll just go top to bottom. So for William Brown, show of hands. Lydia Lee.
Yes.
So with four votes, Lydia Lee is appointed. Adina Levin.
Yes.
Five votes, Adina Levin is appointed. Philip Mazara.
Yes.
Five votes, Philip is appointed. And Betsy Nash.
Yes.
Again, five votes, Betsy Nash is appointed.
Thank you. Now, on EQC, given there are, correct, that there are three applicants for three positions, shall we take a vote by acclamation to appoint all three?
One thing we will have, one moment. We do have three terms, however, one is ending to fill an unexpired term, so that expires June 30th of 2020. The other two are to fill to full terms, ending April 30th of 2022. So you will need to appoint someone to the unexpired term, as well as two to the full terms.
I would just, we draw straws. I'm serious. Okay.
That's, I think, probably a fair thing to do. I don't think there's any, any...
Yeah, just have them draw straws.
Will do.
Okay. Next is Finance and Audit Committee, where there are two vacancies.
I'd like to nominate Sudi Tronsen.
Great, and I will nominate Roger Royce.
Okay, so these are for two terms. Can I see a show of hands for Roger Royce?
Yes.
Five votes, he is appointed. And for Sudi Tronsen?
Yes.
Five votes, Sudi Tronsen is appointed. If you'd like, we can move on to the Park and Rec. That one's pretty straightforward, by acclamation, if we can appoint.
I think by acclamation, yes.
Yeah.
One applicant for the one vacancy.
All right, so the final one for this evening is the Planning Commission. We have two terms ending April 30th of 2022. Please note that Isabel Gies should also be considered for the Housing Commission, not Planning.
I'd like to nominate Camille Kennedy. Vice Mayor Mueller?
Yeah, so I'm actually going to speak on this. As Rich said, that we have a tradition where we, with second, second-term candidates, we, unless they've done something, we usually reappoint them. I also want to make, I'm going to be nominating Drew Combs, and I also, he's been an excellent commissioner, and he's obviously been the chair of the commission last night. I saw him do a very good job. But I also want to point out, and I think it's important, that for a commitment to diversity in the city, we have two commissioners out of all of our commissioners who are African-American, and Drew is one of them. And if he, if for some reason tonight, we decided not to reappoint him, the commission will be all Caucasian. So...
There's diversity in all kinds.
I'm just, I'm, I haven't finished speaking yet, one, but two, I did want to point that out and make that nomination.
Council Member Carlton, would you like to nominate?
Oh, I guess I'll do Larry Kale.
And Council Member Keith, did you have a nomination?
They have been nominated.
Okay.
Okay, we will proceed to the vote. Show of hands for Drew Combs.
Oh, actually, I want to make one, I want to make one statement before we vote, as Council Member, Vice Mayor Mueller just made.
Go ahead, but Kirsten, can you just speak a little bit louder?
Oh, yes, I will speak louder. I think, I understand what Vice Mayor Mueller is saying, and I think we had a bit of a discussion about this, about just the conflict. And while I think Drew has done a great job, my concern is, as we talked about, was just the conflict with the Facebook issue, because he works at Facebook. And Peter, can you hear me now or not?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So in, the concern is that in the next few years here, while we look at the Facebook Village proposal coming forward, we already have two Planning Commissioners who have to recuse themselves. And I'm interested in making sure that we get as much input as we can, and so the conflict concerns me. And I brought this, we talked about this, all five of us, with all the applicants, and asked staff to look at conflict issues to make sure that we understood what the conflicts were. So I just, I wanted to say that because I have concerns about that, just because I think that the Facebook project is going to be something that we're going to be looking at heavily over this next term for Planning Commissioners.
Just, just real briefly, we have one council member now with a conflict. Drew didn't have the conflict when he joined the Planning Commission. He may not have it by the time he would leave the Planning Commission in his second term. We've, on the general plan, at that time, it proceeded with only four, and three were conflicted out, and now there's five, who, now five are available to vote. Conflicts will happen with Facebook in our city, that is for certain. It is growing larger every day. I don't think that should preclude people from public service.
Yeah, and I'll just make one quick comment. I don't think it should preclude people either. I just have a concern for this period of time.
So I think we should call the question, and Judy, go ahead.
Show of hands for Drew Combs. With three votes, Drew is appointed. Show of hands for Larry Kale. And show of hands for Camille Kennedy.
Yes.
With four votes, Camille Kennedy is appointed. And we will bring back the Housing Commission and the Library Commission to the May 8th meeting, and we'll get you the schedule of meetings and attendance.
Actually, I think we are going to do library, I thought, because I think we can do library, because all of the applicants...
Are new.
Are new.
I need to use the restroom.
All right, go ahead, go ahead. So I'd like to nominate Nupur Pandey.
So we do have the same instance where we have two full and two unexpired, unexpired terms as well. Do you want to just appoint and then have them, you know, pull the straws to...
I think that's probably...
I actually think we should just decide, I would be happy to have Nupur be full-time. That'd be the longer term.
We have to appoint him first.
Yeah, I want to nominate Katie Hadrovic.
I'd like to nominate Alan Cohen.
And I'll nominate Ashley Chambers.
We'll wait for Ray, right?
Did we get two nominations?
Yep.
When we have, remember, so I'd like to nominate Sukanya Guha, who's a teacher. Kirsten, did you have any additional comments while we're waiting for Ray to rejoin us?
Sure, I mean, you heard, I nominated Katie Hadrovic.
Great, yes, we did.
Okay.
And we did, did we decide on the 2022 versus 2020 terms, or is there a...
I would put Nupur for 2022.
I just don't see how we do it now, when we didn't do it with the other one.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think we have to vote first.
Okay.
And it's two of each, two on 2020 and two on 2022.
Yeah, so two are ending 2020, and two are ending in 2022. We've been, we've, on one of the previous commissions, we talked about essentially drawing straws, the, oh, and...
No, no, I understand the rest, Peter.
What was that, Kirsten?
The rest is clear. Just, I guess we'll wait till we vote.
Okay, so we're now back, Ray's back, go ahead.
Which, I'm sorry, which one?
So this is Library Commission. We've nominated Ashley Chambers, Alan Cohen, Sukanya Guha, Katie Hadrovic.
I'll work off yours, and I don't have any nominations.
Okay, got it. All right, Judy, proceed.
So we will start with Ashley Chambers. Please raise your hands.
Aren't there four for four?
No, actually, we have five nominations for four spots.
Oh, please repeat, I have Katie, Ashley, and who are the other three?
So it's Ashley, Alan Cohen, Sukanya Guha, Katie Hadrovic, and Nupur Pandey are the five that have been nominated.
Thank you.
And we're now voting on Ashley.
Yes, I will vote yes.
With three votes, Ashley is appointed. Going on to Alan Cohen.
Yes.
With four votes, Alan is appointed. Moving on to Sukanya Guha.
Wait, don't we do it in the order, are you doing it in the order of nomination?
I've been doing it in the order on the screen, from top to bottom. From what I could tell, that's how it was done in the past.
No.
No?
No, it should be the order of nomination.
It doesn't.
I think if we are limited to four votes each, I still think it works out.
Yeah.
Okay, so. So Sukanya Guha.
Next is Katie Hadrovic.
Hadrovic, yes.
Thank you. With three votes, Katie is appointed. Finally, Nupur Pandey.
Yes.
With five votes, Nupur Pandey is appointed.
I have a suggestion. We could do the people that get the longer years are the people with the most votes. Does that make sense?
It's fine.
I think that's fine in this case, since we have the different numbers.
So that way, Nupur and Alan Cohen would have the longer terms. Seems fair.
Now, let me ask about the Housing Commission. Are any of these applicants...
I think there's no one, there's no, they're all termed out. So, these are all new applicants, I believe.
These are all new, so.
If I can nominate Rachel Horst?
Well, we haven't started nominating yet, but.
So, are we?
Oh, sorry.
So, because of that, shall we go ahead and do the Housing Commission?
So, we actually have two positions open now, because Camille just came off on the planning. And so, one would be, I believe, one would be a two-year spot, and then there would be a four-year spot.
That's a very good point. So.
So, are we taking nominations, Senator?
So, this is for the.
May I nominate?
Sorry, Kirsten. I'll give you a chance, one second. So, I just want to clarify that this is going to be the four-year spot that we're going to vote on first. Okay, Kirsten, go ahead. You had a nomination?
Rachel Horst.
Okay.
I'll nominate Robert Cordwell.
Who was that nomination from?
Me.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
I'd like to nominate Grace.
Okay. Councilmember Carlton, did you have?
Wendy McPherson.
Okay. Councilmember Carlton has nominated Wendy McPherson. And I assume we're voting just one, because this is the four-year term, correct?
Correct.
And then we'll come back and vote for the, and take, renominate, renominate for the two-year term. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, going in order of nomination, can I see a show of hands for Rachel Horst?
Yes.
With three votes, Rachel is appointed. And next would be Robert Cordwell.
Wait, is this for the two-year now?
Actually, we're going to redo for the two-year.
Yeah, so, so, since we got three votes.
I'd like to nominate Grace for it.
No, we just finished for that.
My apologies, yes. We are done with that round.
Okay.
I'll nominate Grace for the two-year.
Okay, Kirsten is nominating Grace Bennett Pierce. Councilmember Klein. Councilmember Carlton.
Wendy McPherson.
Wendy McPherson. Any other nominations? Okay, go ahead.
Show of hands for Grace Bennett Pierce.
Yes.
Show of hands for Wendy McPherson. With four votes, Wendy McPherson is appointed.
Okay, I think we got through it. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Great. Again, sincere thanks to everyone who applied. We appreciate, and even if you did not get selected tonight, we appreciate your continuing interest. We do have vacancies from time to time. The next part of our agenda is the consent calendar, and I wanted to see if any of my colleagues would like to pull any of the consent items. Councilmember Carlton, your light is on.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I'll move approval of G1 through G5.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Councilmember Klein and a second by Councilmember Carl, Councilmember Keith. And let's vote on the entire consent calendar.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Now, we'll move to a public hearing, which is Resolution Number 6436, amending the city's comprehensive master fee schedule for community development, community services, library, police, and public works. Administrative Services Director Nick Pegueros will make a presentation. Nick, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Nick Pegueros. I'm the city's Administrative Services Director, and I'm pleased this evening to present for city council consideration amendments to our master fee schedule. To start, I want to give a very quick project overview, where, how we got to where we are today. By way of background, annual adjustments were last made in 2016, and these are typically adjustments that were proposed by departments such as community services and, and other departments that charge fees other than building and services, building and, I'm sorry, planning and building. Planning and building fees, or building fees actually, were last adjusted in 2009. And when looking to adjust fees, we, the city council and staff are guided by city council adopted policy from 2010, the user fee and cost recovery policy. As part of this year's update, we conducted an in-depth cost of services study, which was presented to the city council at a study session on February 13. At that study session, the city council received a report from the consultant that conducted the study. The city council provided guidance to staff to return with fee schedule adjustments based on the findings in the study. In addition, the council requested some additional information on certain flat fees for planning services, moving to, or establishing flat fees for planning services, and establishing a reserve fund for building services. I'm not going to go into those items in depth in this presentation. Staff is recommending against both of those items, and it was discussed, it is discussed in the staff report. One of the chief primary elements of a cost of services study is to identify areas or within the city's business where services provided are, and the fees charged for those services are less than the cost to provide the services to the public. Primarily, when we look at major subsidies that arose out of the cost of services study from this most recent review, we found community development had a significant subsidy. And when I say subsidy, this means that we're using general tax dollars to provide fees, to provide services for which fees are insufficient to fully recover the cost. In this, in community development, we have our building review and our inspection, our building inspection and plan review fees, as well as planning support of building review and, or building plan check review and, and planning inspection of building projects. In our public works area and land development, there were additional subsidies that were identified relative to improvement plan review fees and several permits. And then finally, our community services department, this area strives to achieve cost recovery in a number of areas. However, most notably, in the staff report and in the fee schedule, gymnastics and childcare bore the predominant share of the services that require adjustment as part of this fee study. To help illustrate the impact of the fee study findings on a typical or a project here in Menlo Park, staff compiled this analysis that shows the current fee for a 1,000-square-foot residential addition. And as you can see there, the, the top part is the permit, and the dark blue part is the plan check. On the left, on the right-hand side, you have the fee, you have the costs should the council decide this evening to raise the fees to achieve full cost recovery. For context, we looked at our neighboring agencies that also completed a fee study recently with the consultant that the city used. And as you can see here, the fees that the city currently charges is significantly below Palo Alto and Foster City. However, the full cost recovery fee for this particular analysis shows the costs, the full cost recovery would set fees at a higher rate. Now, this does not necessarily mean that there's anything in particular different between, or any reason for the city council to, to suggest that simply, that because Palo Alto and Foster City have set their fees where they are, there are a number of policy considerations that each city council, including ours here this evening, may take into consideration when establishing fees. And I think that one thing of note, as you can see here in the full cost recovery chart, that the level of effort that is provided by our staff, particularly in the area of plan check, and the involvement of planning, planning staff in the plan check process, provides for a considerably higher cost to provide the service than perhaps we're seeing in other, in our current situation and other communities. Considering the significant increase in the, in the fees, if, should the council decide to go to full cost recovery, staff has presented in the staff report an option for the council to consider phasing in the cost recovery for this particular use, the 1,000-square-foot residential addition. In this example, we look at the fee that would be ultimately collected over a four-year period and spread that increase over four years to smooth the effect. At the end of the four-year period, the city achieves full cost recovery. However, as you can see here, the impact of the fee increase is, is, is smaller than it otherwise would be, should we decide to go to full cost recovery. To help, to help illustrate the impact of phasing in the fee, the full cost recovery for our community development services, what you see here, the first, the first segment of the chart is the estimated revenue based on the fees that are currently established with a, with adjustments on an annual basis to achieve full cost recovery in four years. If we add to that the subsidy that would result from phased implementation, here we have the value of the subsidy that would be required to provide, to, to phase in the fee changes for non-single-family residential. And then finally, on the top part here, the single-family residential. So, as you can see, the, when we get to 2021, the fees are full cost recovery, which eliminates the subsidies. However, in the very early years, 2018, 19, because we're, we're phasing in the costs over the four-year period, the subsidies are closer to where we are today. So, for city council's consideration this evening, we are recommending, in addition to opening the public hearing, we are recommending that the city council provide, potentially, one option would be to adopt the fees as they are presented. The council may consider, from a policy perspective, the goal for development services and cost recovery for single-family residential uses and potentially all other uses. As I showed in the previous slide, we've provided information that help assess if, should the city council decide to implement the fee increases over a different, for different groups at different rates. In addition, we are looking for the city council to provide guidance and provide approval of the fee schedule, full implementation. One option is full implementation on July 1 of 2018. Another option would be phased implementation, and that timeframe could be four or two years, or three years, whatever the council desires. And then, the other item of note here is that the recommendation includes establishing, or setting the fees for the July 1, 2019 fiscal year began, with adjustments for known personnel costs, which are the primary driver of fees, of the cost of providing services. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nick. I had a quick question before we go to public comment, which is a clarification about full cost recovery and what that means. Does that include not only the, the direct costs associated with providing that service, meaning, meaning staff member time from either the planning department or the building department? Does it also include the quote-unquote administrative overhead of other city departments that aren't associated but is oversight to, is that what's also included in full cost recovery?
Yes. In addition to general administrative costs, the full cost recovery includes indirect costs such as depreciation on equipment that are used by the individuals providing the service. So, this can be anything from computer equipment to vehicles for inspection that are used by the inspectors. In addition to that, there are costs for facility maintenance. So, this is the cost to maintain the office environment for, for the staff. So, yes to the original question, does this include admin or overhead admin costs? It also includes those other indirect costs as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll now, unless there are any other clarification questions, we'll open the public hearing. Do we, Councilmember Carlton, you have a question?
I do. We had gone through this whole process about the magazine racks, and saying that we had a, a permit that we were going to have for the people of the magazine racks. I asked when the, the offending, really ugly old racks could be pulled out and replaced, and was told that that was pending the program with these permit fees. I didn't find them in there. Did I miss them? What are the, where are the permit fees for the magazine racks for that program that we've begun?
A council member, if I may, could I, while the public, you're taking public comment, perhaps we can just verify whether they're included. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Actually, I can respond to that. Council has not adopted the ordinance, and it hasn't become effective, so they wouldn't be included in the fees yet.
My apologies. I thought it was.
It was introduced, but I don't think it's come back for adoption.
Okay, so, we've gone through the first half and not the second. All right, well, that would explain it then. Thank you. Do we know when that's going to come back?
I, I have some insight on that, as it's been explained to me by the economic development manager, who, I don't know if he's still here, but he was actually compiling the map. Oh, there's a spider on the dice. He was compiling a map. And when, at that meeting, I thought, I'm not sure you were here, Kat. I think you may have had to leave early that night. We, we, there was, there was discussion about whether or not there would be a map to show us, based on the ordinance, where all of the different racks would be. And Mr. Cogan is in the process of making that map before final adoption, in hopes that it would garner full support of the council.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
We hope he's not taking it to pass a rubles with him.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any speaker cards for, for this public hearing? All right. Do we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Shall we by acclamation close the public hearing? Say yes, yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Now, we'll come back up here with any comments. Why don't I go to Kirsten on the line? Councilmember Keith, do you have any comments or questions related to the, to this master fee schedule?
I'll hold my comment.
Okay. Let's see. Councilmember Carlton, did you?
Sure, I had something to put out. I think we had discussed it, but again, it's one of those things that we've discussed that we never did, and I just wanted to remind everyone of this concept. We've done all this work to try and encourage people to do secondary dwellings. We've redone the zoning, we've done all this. We discussed bringing some of the fees down to encourage people to do secondary dwellings. And that I do see us subsidizing, because that helps us with infill, it helps us with affordable housing. And we didn't move forward on that, but I want to put that forward as a, as a potential thing for us to look at, because I think that might also help people. Every little thing we can do to provide more affordable housing, I think that area also helps us with the secondary dwellings, bring affordable housing in, in other areas of the city. That might not have it otherwise.
Nick, go, do you have a response?
No, however, I, we are finding that fee, so if the council decides to set the fee lower than what's in, the council can take action to set the fee that's lower than what's published, should it, should the council decide. And we're just locating that right now, as you can imagine. As you know, from the schedule, there are a number of, a number of lines.
Okay. Councilmember Klein? Councilmember Klein.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. First one is on your comparables, when you look at the other cities, particularly Palo Alto and Foster City, are they, they're doing full cost recovery? That can maybe ask you. I'm going to ask. Let's see. Can you answer that?
I apologize, council member, I missed your question.
Okay. Can you tell me if they're doing full cost recovery, Palo Alto and Foster City, the comparables were full cost recovery, or was that just what they're charging?
I, I don't know the particulars of the council policies in those communities. They did most recently go through a cost recovery study, and so they did make, they did have that information, but I don't know if the fees are set at 100%.
Okay. And then, I think we discussed at the last meeting, and I know we've discussed at least once or twice, is there a, is there a better way to go about managing fees increase to set it at like a CPI increase instead of a five-to-eight-year gap increase that looks humongous, and then we have to phase it so it's even longer? We do that in some areas, but have you looked at doing that across the board?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, one of the recommendations from the consultant is to make at very minimum annual adjustments based on increased labor costs, which we are proposing effective July 1 of 2019, because we have contracts with our units. One of the challenges clearly is to, as you know, as, again, as I mentioned earlier, there is a significant
Right.
... number of items here, so.
Yep. And then is there, I guess, what, how do you measure the kind of usage cost nexus as we go out? Like, particularly community services, if there's a decline in rentals or a decline in use as a result of an increased fee, will you be able to track that so we can fix it if, if we feel like that's the case?
Yes. In community services, the fees for rentals in that example are increasing relatively modest amount, as mentioned in the staff report. Clearly, if the fee increases are impacting demand, staff has the ability to return to council to seek guidance on adjustments if necessary.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Vice Mayor Mueller, did you?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the, the 20, the comparison between 15,000 and 22,000, is that what you estimate the increase will be on a single project, or could it be even higher as a result of the fee increases? I'm trying to determine, like, what, what's the impact to people who are, who are actually doing renovations or building homes as a result of the fee increases on a per-project basis?
So what's provided, was provided in the example to council is a example case, 1,000 square foot residential addition. These are the plan check and permit fees that are applied on the building side. If there is a, if there are any other services that are required, clearly that would, that would add to these fees. However, it's my understanding that these are the more significant fees, and this is clear, and this is definitely where we saw the more significant fee increases as a result of the study. So we made an attempt to present sort of the, the largest chunk of the fee here.
Thank you. All right. I'll make a, I've got a couple of questions and some comments. So the, the all other projects category includes not only office, but also multi-unit, you know, or residential, is that, is that true? I was trying, so you have single-family and you, because the way the tables are labeled, make sure I understand that.
So not, the non-single-family residential is, or the other uses, does include multifamily residential?
Okay, great. So as I look at page 70, table 3, that if we went to full cost recovery on all other projects, which is both commercial and, and multi-unit large residential projects, that would be an immediate, actually 1.2 million, I would say 908, 908,000, but the 908 is simply the difference between a phased in, in implementation.
Correct.
But actually, an immediate implementation would, would yield 1.247 million, according to this table, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I would, I would recommend we go to full cost recovery immediately on the commercial, large residential. I think those projects do have enough profitability built into them. I don't think this is going to, I think it's less than a rounding error, quite frankly. I don't, I don't mean that flippantly, but the, the, I, I don't think we, I think we should be covering the full cost, both direct and indirect, when it comes to commercial and the larger projects.
Why the larger projects? Why the larger?
No, those are larger multi-unit apartment, but, right, so apartment condos, you know, you know, larger. I think, thank you, Councilmember Klein. It'll pencil out, he's always been far more eloquent in getting that. On the, on the residential side, I, I struggle with, because the, the single-family residential, while, yeah, a thousand square foot addition is, 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 costs a lot right now. And, you know, and we, a couple of years ago, we, we have implemented the requirement for residential sprinklers if there's over a 75%. I, you know, I kind of think of this as more of a service that we should be providing, and, and I think of it as perhaps we cover the direct cost, or that their fees should certainly cover the direct costs, but not necessarily the indirect costs. I think the indirect costs are something that we, as a city, can, can absorb. So I'm either, whatever that number, it's probably close to what the current number is, but whatever that is, I mean, I think I would probably be fine with that. Or if, or if there is a consensus about trying to raise it, I would certainly look at a much longer time horizon, a phase in on it. But I'm, I'm definitely more sensitive about not wanting to increase the, the fees on the single-family residential. I, I think that's something that we should provide as part of our service to, to residents. I did have a question on page 72, there's about youth sports, and a question just, it talked about 2017, 18 revenue, 530,000. Cost recovery in this survey shows a 10% cost recovery. Just wanted to understand what's that, in that category of youth sports, when we, when we know that, for example, with gymnastics, we're at 81% cost recovery. Is youth sports like field license or, or field rental fees for, like, Little League, AYSO, things like that? Is that what we're?
Yes.
Is that, oh, fields separated out or?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for, I see Community Services Director Swigert approaching. But just to, to clarify, it appears that the study did find that youth sports was 100% cost recovery. This is a typo here in the report.
Oh, okay. Got it. Okay. Ed, Derek, there you go. All right. Thank you. I was just trying to make sure I understood that. I do agree with Councilmember Carlton's suggestion about, about having a significant discount on secondary dwellings. I do, you know, we, we put a lot of work into trying to make it a little bit easier to do secondary dwellings, and I, I certainly think, as to what that is, I don't, I can't tell you, but I do think we should incentivize secondary dwellings in our community, and...
May I make a flipside argument?
Yep.
I, I always am sensitive to raising fees, but I think also it's important, when you have the discussion, to make an acknowledgement that when you don't raise fees to full cost recovery, but expenses are going up for staff and for services, in essence, what ends up happening is all of the other taxpayers supplement those services. So you're not really saving one, you're just passing the, the, the cost to another. We still have those same costs, and it's just, we're using tax, we're using tax money from other people to make up for that loss in the planning department.
Okay. Fair enough. I think that's a good point. Councilmember Carlton.
How many secondary dwellings have we had in the past five years? Like, seven?
No, it's actually a higher number. It's less than 20, though, as I recall.
It's less than 20. It's a handful.
I'd have to go back and look it up.
It's a handful. I, I completely agree with you, right? But I think in this instance, we really want to get more homes that are, maybe not BMR, but definitely the smaller, more affordable infill, and we need them all over the, the place. And so I, I'm actually okay with, with subsidizing that, especially, and I agree with...
Secondary dwellings.
Yeah. And I, and I agree with, with Marotaki on keeping the step, the phased plan for the homes, but at least speeding that up, if not immediate, darn near immediate, for the corporates. Maybe, I mean, I don't know, I'll have to think about it. Maybe the first year, we give them warning, so the people that have already purchased something, and it does, making sure it does pencil. But certainly after next year, you know, they've had warning, they're, I don't know how many things are pending, but I, I have no problem with doing absolute cost recovery on the, the corporate.
Okay. Vice Mayor Mueller?
Yeah. So, and I wasn't trying to make the point only with, with secondary dwellings, but just, again, to be devil's advocate, home prices have gotten very high, and part of the cost of making bids on homes right now is the cost of, of what the contractor, because many of the homes are being bought by contractors, frankly, it had happened to one side of me, I think it's about to happen to the other side of me. And part of that cost that they're calculating into making their bid is the cost of what all of these fees are. If these fees go up, their bid may be a little bit less in order to make sure that everything pencils. I'm not sure that by keeping fees in check for single-family homes, that we're indeed helping, I mean, we're helping the person perhaps selling the home, but I'm not sure that we're actually helping the residents who are remaining in town, who are supplementing that cost to the city, and...
Councilmember Keith, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah. Sorry, I have to get off the phone there. Hi.
Having a hard time hearing you, Kirsten.
Oh, I will speak up. Sorry, I'm trying to talk into the earbud here. I hope that is better. Is that better, Peter?
Not much better, no.
Oh, shoot.
Anyway, can you speak directly in the, in your microphone or?
Yes. Let me try it this way, I think it's better. Is this better if I speak this way?
That's a little better.
Or is it worse? A little better. Okay. So, thank you, Nick, for the staff report.
Oh, now we're losing you again.
You're losing me. Okay, one sec. One sec. All right. Can you hear me at this point? I'll, I'll try and speak again loudly, and you can tell me if, if you can't hear me. Thank you for the staff report, Nick. I think it is important that we have full cost recovery, and I do want to make some comments about what my colleagues have said.
Kirsten, yeah, we can't hear you.
Okay.
Did you change headsets or something?
No, but I, I, can you, maybe this is a little bit better? Is this a little bit better?
I'm wondering whether, do you want to try calling back in, or?
Yeah, why don't you have, just call me back? Do you want to try calling me back?
Okay. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Oddly, it's getting, oddly, it's getting even softer as you continue. I, in the meantime, I think I, I think I'm leaning toward where I think, when it comes to housing and the costs and, and some of those fees, I'm less sensitive than I am to childcare.
Hello. Maybe you have a better connection.
Councilmember Keith, are you able to hear us?
Affordability of services, things like that, where I don't think.
I can hear you. Yes.
It's the same economic structure
Can you hear me?
... problem. And so I'm, I'm more, I think I'm more leaning toward where Ray is on the, on the fees for the construction in this case.
Councilmember Klein, while, while I've got...
Aside from the...
Are you looking at a phase in or an immediate phase in?
I think immediate for the larger, as, as you said, but I do think the others should be phased in.
For residential should have a phase in period.
So I think we're in agreement.
Okay.
And the only reason I say to, to, that I'm okay with supplementing the secondary dwellings is because it does help everyone. It does help everyone in the community when we have an affordable place for a teacher to live, so that we get good teachers who can drive to, to school and not have to commute in from Danville or places.
So I can clarify that. The current fees are subsidized for the secondary dwelling units through planning, and we're not proposing any change in that. But we would want to look at potentially lowering the fees so that they're a little more subsidized on the building permit fee end.
Thank you. But everything else, I think, should pay for itself, absolutely.
Okay. Councilmember Keith, do we have you now?
Yes. Are you able to hear what I'm saying at this point?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Okay. Hi there. I'll make my comments brief, but I, I think we need to move towards full cost recovery. I am in favor of having some sort of, allowing our, our secondary dwelling units, as Councilmember Carlton brought up, to have that at a lower rate for, but I think it should be for a certain amount of time. And I don't know if you have discussed, it should be three years, two years, but for some amount of time, having that at a lower rate is appropriate to me as well, just so that we can try to get some more affordable housing units. And I do appreciate the fact, you know, I'm thinking the same thing, when we subsidize one thing, we are basically paying for it with, with childcare dollars. And that's what we're doing on all these things that we don't have full cost recovery on. So on the commercial side, yes, I think we should go to full cost recovery now, and I think, I'm looking at the staff report, full cost for commercial and larger projects, multi-unit projects and condos. But then I think that maybe we could look up phasing in over the four years, as was suggested in the staff report, for the residential, single-family residential, but not other occupancy types. And you guys might have had a little bit of discussion that I couldn't hear because they were calling me back.
Okay. Thank you, Kirsten. Councilmember Klein, do you have a?
I don't have more. You can summarize.
I'll, I'll make a motion to...
Okay. Go, go ahead. Councilmember Carlton.
Move to, to approve this, you know, when you bring it back, you know, you have direction. We'd like to see what you can do for secondary dwelling support with phased in for the individual housing and with immediate effect for the larger mixed-use corporate.
Commercial.
Commercial, thank you.
Commercial and multi-unit.
And through, through the chair, Mr. Mayor, just question on the, the motion. So is the motion, as I understand it, is to implement the, the full cost recovery plan for all other uses other than single-family residential for community development fees?
On an immediate, or, you know, relatively immediate basis?
Effective July 1 of 2018. And then for single-family residential, if, I, I believe I heard a phase in, but I need to know the period of the phase in, if it's...
Well, you suggested four years. That seems acceptable.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we...
Does the motion include the, the services that Councilmember Klein was referring to, such as childcare? And I'm just curious, I don't know.
Yeah, I was, you know, because of the length of time, I, I wasn't challenging the increases, only that I think there needs to be a more stable process to increase them on an ongoing basis. on an ongoing basis if we are increasing them, instead of having these gaps where it jumps up by a percentage. I think that's harder to manage for a household.
Right, so the 3% increases that are recommended in the schedule are sort of a modest—
You stay with the, yeah, with the index, yeah.
Great, okay, so there's no change, no changes on those schedules as proposed. Do we have a second? I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Great, let's—
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you, Nick, good work. Worked with the team there, so appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do, this was very much a team effort, and I do want to do a shout out to our Revenue and Claims Manager, John McGur, who has been with the city for over 20 years now, and was instrumental in pulling this together.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. And thank John for us. All right, next item is regular business, the amended and restated franchise agreement with Recology for Waste Collection Services. Sustainability Manager Rebecca Lucky will present the report. Rebecca, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Taki, councilmembers. Rebecca Lucky, Sustainability Manager, here tonight to discuss proposed Recology franchise agreement for 2021 to 2035. So the recommendation before you tonight is to adopt a resolution to amend and restate the franchise agreement with Recology for Waste Collection Services between 2021 and 2035. And before I go on, I forgot to introduce Joe La Mariana, who is the Executive Director of the SBWMA. You're so quiet when you came up to say—
Joe, welcome.
And he's been instrumental in coordinating this effort to renegotiate with Recology and extension on our current contract. So a little bit of background, the city is a member of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, otherwise known as the SBWMA, or Rethink Waste. And the SBWMA owns and manages the Waste Transfer Station and Recycling Facility in San Carlos. And they also assist agencies with achieving economies of a scale through collective procurement of waste collection or waste processing services. And the SBWMA Board is represented by elected officials from the 12 cities in San Mateo County, of which Councilmember Carlton is on the board, and represents Menlo Park. So about a decade ago, the SBWMA had an open RFP process, request for proposals, to find a waste hauler to collect waste recycling and compost, and also to try to find a company to operate the Shoreway Waste Transfer and Recycling Facility. So Recology was awarded the contract for waste collection services for the SBWMA territory, and for the operation of the Shoreway facility, South Bay Recycling was the company that was awarded that contract. So our current agreement with Recology will be expiring December 31, 2020, and there is a provision in the agreement that allows the SBWMA and the agencies to negotiate an extension. So just a timeline of significant milestones throughout this process. Our contract with Recology started in 2011, and in 2016, the SBWMA Board appointed a committee to negotiate an extension with Recology. And then in 2017, the SBWMA Board approved of the recommendations from that committee to provide a model franchise agreement to work with. And based on that approval, cities were then tasked with customizing their contracts for particular services, such as servicing city facilities, or the number of events that Recology provides service to on an agency-level basis, or a city-level basis. So where we are right now is on the blue dot here in 2018, and so eight of the SBWMA agencies need to adopt a new agreement by June 30. And the existing agreement with Recology will be expiring in December of 2020. And then the new agreement will begin January 1, 2021, and end December 31, 2035. So the advantages of extending the agreement with Recology, there—it falls into two piles, no pun intended there, direct cost savings and efficiency gains. So the cost savings, you'll receive cost savings by avoiding new provider pitfalls, rollout issues, and a RFP process. So trying to find a new provider is at minimum at least $1 million to undertake. And then there's the sharing of inflation risk by Recology through a labor cap. So in the agreement, there is a 2% labor cap for Recology's workforce, and that essentially means each year, they can only receive 2%. So if there's a negotiated 3% in their labor force, we are only on the hook for 2% of that, and Recology has to increase their efficiencies, or dig into other sources of their profit margin to pay for that service. And then there is also over $25 million in savings from spreading the depreciation cost of a new collection fleet over 15 years. So this contract is longer than our original contract, typically it's around 10 years. But by having a 15-year term, we're able to use the existing Recology fleet, and that, again, it translates to over $25 million of savings over the next 15 years. And then the efficiency gains, there's uninterrupted labor contracts, there's consistency with the existing waste recycling and composting services. It maintains stability and predictability by controlling the cost increases, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. There's a very heavy methodology used and protections in place to do that. And it takes advantage of existing collection efficiencies and community knowledge. So essentially, 90% of the proposed agreement has remained unchanged, and there are just slight areas of changes to service that include a new class of service for mixed-use buildings that was not previously in the original agreement. And then that essentially just provides Recology a way to build mixed-use buildings for the commercial portion, they're billed commercial rates, and for the residential portion, they're billed residential rates. There's also going to be a cap of 150 pickups per day for bulky items. Right now, the current average is 120 pickups per day. And then there's also a proposed cap of 30 pickups per day for abandoned or illegal waste dumping, and that currently is about 13 pickups per day at the moment. And then there are adjustments to streamline the reporting requirements as well, just basic cleanup. And so for Menlo Park, there are some specific terms that were negotiated, and basically it's adding language that would align with the city's zero-waste plan goals that the city council adopted back in September of 2017. And there are some known issues that we're still working through with Recology that will need to be revisited after, should the council and the SBWMA go forward with remaining with Recology. And that includes additional multifamily collection services, enhanced abandoned waste and illegal dumping collection services. So if we're having issues with Recology meeting those caps, there is a way forward in trying to work out different strategies. And then there's the development and implementation of a litter management plan to comply with the Clean Water Act and our stormwater permit requirements, and revisions to city park and facilities collection services. And there's likely to be more revisions regarding Menlo Park's zero-waste plan goals, and making sure that the contract aligns with what the vision is for the city. So Recology's compensation and SBWMA rate impacts. So the SBWMA Board is recommending a starting base compensation of $64.2 million in 2021. And this essentially amounts to a 2.4 increase in 2020 and an 8.4 increase in 2021. And Menlo Park's share of this pie is about 10%, or 6.6 million. And just to give you a data point for reference, in 2018, the compensation was about 57 million. And then after 2021, compensation would correspond to changes in consumer price indices, with a cap of 5% per year, and development growth based on a rolling three-year average. So there are some costs that will need to be negotiated closer to the start date of the new franchise agreement, and that's because of their unpredictability in market and growth, particularly in the fuel index, and just development growth that has been happening in San Mateo County, and of course, particularly in Menlo Park. The city council sets customer rates to recover the cost to compensate Recology, and I think it's really important to note that when a customer receives their bill, 55% of that customer's bill pays for Recology services, and the remainder is used to process and recycle waste, and it's associated with that cost, and that's not in the scope of Recology services. The good news is that the city council has taken steps to reduce impacts for Menlo Park customers in regards to transitioning to an extended franchise agreement with Recology, or even potentially finding a new provider. So the city council approved of modest rate increases for 2018, 2019, and 2020, back in November, to— One reason was to reduce a dramatic rate increase at the end of this existing agreement. There were other areas where we're trying to align actual services with a particular accounts associated. So the anticipated increase for Menlo Park in 2021 is expected to be around 4.2%, which is lower than the projected SBWMA increase of 8.4%. And it also includes rate stabilization reserves of $600,000 by 2021, and this should help, again, reduce the unknown costs related to fuel index or development growth. And then lastly, and not related to Recology's compensation, but will impact the rates, is the restrictions in the Chinese recycling market. They're becoming stricter and stricter. Just as a case in point, 80% of mixed paper that goes to the Shoreway facility is typically sent to China, and in the past, we've gotten around $150 per ton on it, and now it's about $5, or—and crashing. Zero? Joe tells me. And so that's going to create some issues in the future, not only for us, but almost all cities in the state of California who are required to recycle by state law. And so based on the cost savings and the ability to better manage and control rate increases and overall service benefits provided, it's recommended that the city council adopt a resolution to amend and restate the franchise agreement with Recology for Waste Collection Services between 2021 and 2035. And the alternatives are not to adopt the resolution, or you could provide staff with a different direction. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Rebecca and Joe. The—first of all, let me check if there are any clarifying questions before we go to public comment. Do we have any public comment cards? Okay, we don't.
Oh my God, it's ended us.
No, actually, I see that, or—actually, how did that—all right. Let's see, I actually would like Councilmember Carlton, since you're on SBWMA, our representative, would you like to ask some questions, and then I'll go to Councilmember Keith?
First of all, thank you very much for putting up with me for the past few days when I've been calling them and really getting into details on service level agreements. And the thing that makes me nervous on these contracts is there's so many moving parts, and one piece can come up and bite you. For example, you were so sweet and eloquent when you were explaining what's happening to China. This is a big deal. We had a shipload full of recycling that went to China, and they turned the ship around and sent it back. We're producing over a ton of this recycled paper and plastic, a ton a month, over a ton a month, and that's just us. We're not even every city in San Mateo County. This is happening all over California, and we've been set up where we're not—we don't have the facilities to deal with this because we've been lulled into sending it to China. And China's gone from 8% dirty paper to 0.05. So if you can imagine, they randomly take a bale down, split it down the middle, if they're two pieces—it was explained to me, if they're two pieces of colored paper, the whole thing fails and gets sent back. You know, it's gotten—basically, it's kind of one of those forced choices that we all do with our kids, where really, they're saying they don't want our stuff anymore. And it's not the fault of anyone, they just changed their policy. So now, we're scrambling to look at, do we send it to India, do we send it to Vietnam, what are the other markets? And we had a big meeting about this with the League of California Cities, because there's a bill coming out to try and lessen the fees on the cities while we figure this out. And the painful truth is, the fees are going to go up again. And the fees are going to go up because we're going to have to figure out alternate ways of dealing with the recycling. Probably, we're going to be dealing with new facilities in California to deal with that, and it's a big deal. But anyway, that's just giving you guys—
But this is not part of the Recology agreement, however.
It is not. I'm just giving you guys background information on—
But it is part of SBWMA.
It's part of SBWMA, and it impacts what's coming up. It's going to impact our contract, it's going to impact our fees. Now, do the unions—we got bitten last time because the union contracts expired the same time our contract expired with Allied Waste. Have we successfully been able to stagger that now so this doesn't happen again when we're redoing with Recology? Because I counted the three years, and it gets kind of close.
It does get close, and I should state that the SBWMA is not a party at that table. Those are contracts, contractual discussions between Recology and the respective collective bargain units.
So there's nothing really we can do about that?
There's nothing we can do, yeah.
Okay. And then that leads to a wider question, and I ask you this because I want this on the record. So this is the—this is the contract for the group. Once eight get approved, basically, it's a done deal, and we're—seven have been approved, we're basically at this point. And if we're not, the next city council is next week, or what have you.
Correct.
So when this is approved, and then we go back to negotiate with Recology in December 2020, what teeth do we have to come to an agreement? What happens if we don't come to an agreement? Can you talk us through that process so that people understand?
Sure. Covered a lot of ground there. We went from the international global markets and the radical shift that happened in the last couple of months that was not forecast or projected. There was a major shift in—by the Chinese government that was almost immediately implemented, which is certainly their prerogative, but we would have loved to have had a longer—excuse me, a longer lead time in that, so that we could do modifications to our process and our plans. Again, that's outside the direct realm of the Recology discussion, but it is in the realm of the overall system capture discussion. We are looking at a handful of items that are outside the franchise agreement that is in front of you tonight. There are three items, in particular, the bulky item collection, the abandoned waste, and the stormwater regs. The subcommittee that was assembled last year to negotiate with the Recology team decided that there was—we—there was an urgency to the timeline for us to deliver a model template and a cost proposal, and it was clear that those three items would require more discussion, more research to confirm the validity of what some of the issues were, and to get a better understanding what the operational parameters were and options were. So at the board direction, we mutually agreed to put those three items in a parking lot, move forward with the large-scale comprehensive franchise agreement so that services would be known, and we could maintain continuity of those. And then the plan is to, in late June, presumably when there are eight, if not 12, member agencies that have signed on to the franchise and the cost proposal for 2021, that we could then open discussions with the Recology team and negotiate on those three items, and get a better understanding of what they entail, what the costs are, and what the impacts are.
Okay, so I apologize, I get back to my original question.
Sure.
And what if we don't agree?
If you don't agree tonight?
No, no, if we don't agree with Recology, or is that just going to get voted on—
If you're referring to the amendments that I was just—
The things that we pulled out, for example.
The three. We—I will need to get our legal counsel to confirm it, but you will still have the benefit of those services for the base level of service. benefit of those services for the base, for the base level of service, just like we do right now. There'll be no change in that. Specifically, what this would affect is the very dramatic increase that Recology has recorded, and they've got the data to support it, that there's been dramatic increase in not only bulky item collection appointment requests, but also the abandoned waste issue. Since the recession, the abandoned waste issue has become a really big deal and it hasn't gone away, you know? In, in the past, we've noticed that there's been, you know, these types of activities, but they sort of track to the business cycle. And when the business gets better, typically, they fall off. That has not been the case now. So, what we would need to do is come to terms with them. On those, there are some other options that we could consider, at least with the abandoned waste part, that we were, that there has been some discussion on about the possibility of using another party for the supplemental part of that. That, we just haven't gone anywhere with that discussion because we're not that, we're not at that stage of the discussion yet.
I've seen that. Can you talk to me more about what third party might be available?
Well, I honestly don't know.
Is that a real option?
Yeah, I don't know. Honestly, that needs to be vetted. We need to discuss it in its entirety. We need to get our legal counsel to provide us guidance on that and that, none of that has occurred yet. And that's all part of the vetting I was referring to earlier. So, so again, to answer the question pretty succinctly, the citizens of, of Menlo Park would enjoy the same scope of services that they're getting right now. It's the supplemental services that tie with a handful of the member agencies who get a disproportionate amount of these abandoned waste calls. And we, we need to meet offline as a group and figure out how we're going to handle that.
We, we have been, we just haven't agreed. So, for the, just to tell my colleagues and, and the people here and put it on record, we've kind of been going around because I'm concerned about, some other jurisdiction cities, areas are doing a lot of illegal dumping and it's causing stress on the system such that prices won't go up. And I want to make sure that the people in Menlo Park, to Ray's point about supplementing earlier, I want to make sure that we're not paying any extra fees to cover other jurisdictions that can't figure out how to put their trash in a trash can. And part of this, I totally agree with, you know, it's, it says contractors will schedule up to a maximum of 150 on-call curbsites. So, you know, like twice a year, we call, they pick up the bulky stuff that we have. They only have so many people and so many trucks, so if they get too many all at once, they have the right to say, "Sorry, we're really busy this week, we're going to schedule you for next week." Fair enough.
But, but you would still, good, as a resident or as a customer, you would still get two.
That is correct.
But you may not get it the particular week that you request because of the 150.
Exactly. And I, I'm totally okay with that. I think that cap totally makes sense. I mean, it's, it's just, you only have so many trucks. Where it gets a little hairier is where they have the daily limit on the on-call bulky item. And on that, they're saying that they have, you know, a cap, which is fine. But instead of just saying, "There's a cap, we'll get it tomorrow or next week or, or what have you," they're saying, "Once it reaches, reaches a certain amount, they'll want to come back and renegotiate the cost to deal with it." And they want to come back and, and think about a third-party person. And I understand why they're saying that-
This is on bulky pickups or on abandoned?
This is only abandoned.
Abandoned, okay.
Now, Menlo Park, this is not an invitation for anyone to do this. Menlo Park doesn't really have a problem with this. Other jurisdictions do, and I'm not going to name them because that's mean. They're just other places that have, that are the worst culprits. And so, I'm just putting it on record that I will do everything within my power to make sure, because I like to have, have everything written down before I agree. It, it creeps me out to have anything pulled out. But I will make sure that people in Menlo Park aren't subsidizing the costs incurred by other cities because of illegal dumping. That, that's my only concern. Beyond that, generally, you guys, every, Recology, everyone has done a, a good job. By extending this, we save literally tens of millions of dollars. So, I'm, I'm in agreement with, with passing this. I only have this one area that makes me nervous. And so, I wanted to call it out to you all and say publicly and on the record, I want to make sure that the people that are the offenders own that. Does that make sense?
Yes, it certainly does. I can understand your, your thought process and, and the concerns involved. That's why it's such a high priority for us immediately when this process is done. We got clear direction from the board and from the FACS Subcommittee. I keep referring to FACS, the Franchise Agreement Extension Committee, that's an acronym, FACS. We got clear, staff, we got clear direction from both parties to make sure that this issue gets resolved, but to keep our eye on the ball on the, on the big picture. And the big picture is the overall, overarching franchise agreement itself so that we don't have any sort of interruption of services and, and we can keep forth with that. Just one thought, if I could, one of the ideas that we've been kicking around just incidentally is to have perhaps a voucher system that would allow folks to realize the benefits of the twice-a-year bulky item collection. But instead of doing it by appointment and having to wait, we're looking at ways, working very closely with the Recology team to find ways to actually have a voucher so you could do it on demand as you clean out your garage and you don't have to wait a week from Thursday or something of that nature. That would, if we were able to execute that, and that's, in our industry, that's a pretty innovative approach. It may be a standard in other industries, but for us, it's, it's fairly new. So, they're working out the logistics of it. I know their IT, IT team is working on how that could be executed. That in turn would bleed off some of that, some of the appointments, which in turn would create more capacity, which in turn would, would sort of ease up on the demands for labor and the fleet that, right now, they're, they're feeling are, they're about 80% capacity, I guess, is what I'm saying. So, just thought I'd throw that out.
Okay. And we appreciate that Recology's been really great on sending out messages and the billing. We're, we've been working on a program where people can leave their phones after Christmas and a bag on top of their cans so that people can donate their old phones to blind people in particular really need Siri and the people that are in need of phones. You know, you've been good community partners and, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Councilmember Klein?
Just calling out one, I, I think what I heard, and I might have missed it when I stepped out, it's, there's a, there's a shared risk now with the 1%, right? If it goes up 3%, there's a 1% share on the risk Recology takes if unforeseen increase or, you know, more than we expected. Because we had that, I think, at '09 or, it was '09 or '10, I remember we had that-
Right, you were serving at that time.
Yeah, I remember that.
If, if I could make an overarching statement, one of the things from the agency and therefore the member agencies' point of view that's attractive about this, one of many things that are attractive is, the Recology team, in the spirit of the negotiations, has agreed to assume virtually all risk in many categories for inflation between now and the year 2021 when the new, it's not a new contract, I might add, it's a restated and amended contract. It's an important difference, contractually speaking. So, they actually take on all inflationary risk in that, during that period. And that was actually a very notable concession on their part during the negotiations. There, there are many others, but that was one that was just brought up a moment ago.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mueller?
I find it, I hope this attempt at humor is successful. I find it ironic, we're talking about recycling when I got over 750 pages on Thursday to-
776 pages, I've never seen it that big.
It's really big.
Yes.
And I wanted to make that point because, because it's going to surprise you, maybe a surprise, but there's no way that I could go through all of this since Thursday. And so, I appreciate the staff report and I appreciate how much work you've all put into it. I personally am going to abstain, just because, in good conscience, I can't, I'm, I just haven't had time to work through this document. And I'm not confident I fully understand everything in it, but I, it's without prejudice to you all. I'm not making a statement about any of the work product. It's just a lot to go through between Thursday and today.
Councilmember Keith, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, hi. And can you please tell me the name of the gentleman from Recology?
Okay, we're having some difficulty again hearing you.
Okay, um, let's try this. Okay, hello, thank you for this report Rebecca. And please tell me the name of the person there from Recology?
So, there's Joe La Marianna here from the SBWMA, and then there's also Mike Kelly and Tammy Delbeany from Recology.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't introduce them before.
And who was responding? I'm sorry, who was responding to the question?
The executive director, Joe La Marianna, from the SBWMA.
Okay. All right, good. Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay Rebecca?
I can, I can hear you.
So, and I do have one question about that, just for your sake, Councilmember Keith, do we know if she's being picked up on the recording at all? Or is it every time she talks, it's just kind of like dead air? Because we can barely hear her.
She's being picked up, I should say.
Okay, if the people inside the control can hear us, it would be great to, it'd be great to confirm that.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, thanks. Vice Mayor Mueller for requesting that information. And I can try to speak, this is another option, if you can hear me better this way.
I think it's about the same.
It's about the same, all right.
Yeah, but we can barely hear you, so.
Oh, great, Peter.
Yeah, go, so go ahead.
Okay. I, I, initially, when I saw this, I thought that the 15-year timeframe seemed very long. I've read the report and understand why it is that, that it's being put out there as a 15-year term. I mean, I, I talked to Alex about this as well, I wish we could do a 10-year with a five-year option to renew. Can you hear me or no?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's one of the questions I had. And then on the service changes, you know, Councilmember Carlton, as you said, you don't like to, you want everything written down before you agree to something. And I feel the same way. And I know this is here before us tonight, but I don't think we have enough information on some of these other changes for me to feel comfortable voting for this. And for example, I had asked Alex to please give me a list of what the other cities are negotiating that's unique to their contract, because I want to know what those things are. And I haven't received that. So, I'm not ready to vote on this. I need more information about what the other cities have uniquely added to the contracts that they have. And I need to know more about the cost of these service changes, the four items that are listed here, the 1, 2, 3. It's the mixed-use building, the bulky item, the abandoned waste. I need more information on this before I can vote on this contract. And I'll leave it at that because I know you, you're having a hard time hearing me.
Go ahead Rebecca.
So, Councilmember Keith, if I may, respond to what other cities have negotiated. So, there's seven other agencies that have already adopted the agreement. And a lot of those negotiations, and they were just very much minor tweaks. There were at least two agencies that required FEMA debris management plans in a case of a natural disaster. There was a zero tolerance for overage, which means typically customers can get a pass two times if there can or bin is overflowing. And one city took the stance of, "No, you'll get charged because of stormwater permit requirements, you cannot have any litter floating around." And then, there was another agency that wanted to provide materials in Chinese or a different language. And then, there was just basic clarification of some minor language terms. And I don't know if Joe knows of any other provisions, but that was the, the check that we had done for the seven agencies that have already gone forward with the agreement.
Yeah. Through, through the mayor, if, if I could, hello, Councilmember Keith, nice to, nice to hear your voice. This is Joe La Marianna. First of all, I, I need to say Rebecca and her staff have done a wonderful job on vetting this. To, to your point, this is not a simple process. It has been extremely well-vetted with a series of public elected meetings and presentations and input sessions, et cetera, over the last year and a half. So, it's, it's been out there quite a bit. Relating to the model template that was approved at the SBWMA board level, along with the cost proposal that accompanied it for the year, for rate year 2021, there, there were a handful of parts of this template that were allowable to be modified. And the vast majority of it was not. It was meant to be accepted as is. And, and so, the category, there's two categories of amendments that would be accepted in this at the local level, at the member agency level. So, one of them falls into the very easy category of administrative changes. So, something as simple as putting on the bottom of each page the city of Menlo Park, just simple administrative things, or inserting the city of Menlo Park in a whole bunch of areas throughout the document to personalize it and customize it. The other, the other portion dealt with 18 different sections. Most of them were extremely perfunctory in terms of what they were allowable to modify. Most of them had to do with confirming things like how many city cans, which are the public cans that go in major active transit corridors or shopping districts, those kinds of things, or in parks and, you know, park and rec environments. With the new restated term, they could be flexed up or down at the local agency's desire. So, those were the things. Rebecca did comment out on the notable things that were a little bit different from that. And they were working closely with Recology in making those happen and also the, the city councils and the agency's council to do those. So, I don't put any of them really in a category of substantive from a big-picture standpoint there. If I could just touch on the, the 15-year term, we eventually, excuse me, the, the current contract term is 10 years. That's fairly standard, but it's not unheard of to have longer contracts. An example that comes to mind is the city of Daly City just, just went into a 15-year franchise agreement. So, that's somebody right here in our county that's done it and it's pretty common. San Francisco's had, it's not a formal franchise agreement, but they've had a relationship with their hauler, which happens to be Recology, since 1932. So, it's, it's quite common in this particular industry when you're dealing with the highly capitalized investments that you need to try to get the longest term possible so you can maximize the depreciation in this. So, during the discussions, we asked for a 10-year term and a 10-year price pro forma in that, and we got that. But in addition to that, the, the company also provided a 15-year option, which we didn't originally request, but we got it, we saw the numbers, the numbers were extremely attractive. And it was the, the, the opinion of both the board and the FACS negotiating committee that it was favorable enough that it made sense to recommend that term. So, that's, that's how we got there. And again, I want to emphasize, it was all in a very public, very transparent decision-making process.
Okay. Hi, hi Joe, thank you for that information. I, I think part of this, I understand, you know, you're going to all the cities and you have seven that have, have said yes. And you need to know this by June 30th, I believe. But I guess what I'd like to see is the rest of these service changes be figured out before I say yes. And I think that people expect us to know what we're, what we're agreeing to before we agree to it. And so, I have a hard time at this point and, at this date, saying yes to this when there are some unknowns out there that I just don't know. And I know there's more time to resolve the unknown. And I've heard Councilwoman Vice Mayor Mueller say that he wants to abstain tonight because you have not the time to go over all the documents, which I totally appreciate. So, I'm looking at it in the respect that, there's a lot of documentation here. I respect the fact that Chuck Carlton is on the board and-
Kirsten, you need to slow down, you need to slow down a little bit because we can barely hear you. When you, and when you speak fast, it's really hard to make out what you're saying.
Okay, sorry, I feel like I'm screaming here. It's important, I think, to probably bring this item back when we have more information and we've had a little more time to review the entire- and we've had a little more time to review the entire contract. And I'm not sure I understand what the hurry is today to pass, to approve this if we know we have until June 30th. So it seems to me there's time to put this on the agenda again with the information, with all the information. And I hope, I hope you can hear what I'm saying.
I think we, we did hear what you said, thank you for slowing it down, Joe.
Yes, if I could. I, I understand the, the thoughts and the, and the concerns here, I really do. Where the urgency comes from, just to explain that, that, that's an important fact in this process, is there's a, there's a joint powers-of-authority governance document that each of the 12 member agencies signed way back when. And section 7.1.1 gives a brief parameter on what it takes to amend some, a major contract amongst the agencies, and this qualifies for that. Where the date comes in, and why that's so important, is if, if the majority of the member agencies haven't approved it by then, the alternative is it kicks, it automatically kicks the request-for-proposal process into place, which can be a $2 to $3 million process. And it can also require probably the next two and a half years' worth of effort to execute that. It took about three years to conduct the last one. So, so that's, I just wanted to explain where the timing part comes in. By, by, if you were to choose to continue this item sometime to another board member, board meeting, excuse me, between now and June 30th, we're not likely to have these issues resolved, to be very blunt. And the reason is, the board has given us very clear direction that this is going to be a separate discussion item, and anything that comes out of that would be proposed, what we are now calling, they would be bundled together in an amendment-one fashion. And that was the, the mechanism that was agreed upon so that we could move forward with a franchise agreement today and, and still give these issues their proper due. Because they really do require a deep dive. I've got the commitment of the Recology team, who's sitting right here, to make this a priority and have this. We're anticipating this taking a good six months or so to work our way through. We would work it through the staff level, the TAC member level, excuse me, the Technical Advisory Committee, TAC representatives, which tend to be senior staff members. And, and then the process would be based on the findings and results of that discussion. It would then go to our board, our board would then presumably at some point approve it. And then we'd be back out amongst the 12-member agency elected bodies for consideration for amendment-one modifications. And we would anticipate that process, probably the discussions being done by December, the end of December of this year, and being back out into the 12-member agency elected bodies in the next spring, so.
But let me clarify that, as I understand what you just said. So let's say one of the later cities finds or decides something that, hey, comes up with a great idea and say, hey, if you tweaked it like this, it would, it would benefit their city. You're actually collecting all of these comments or requests from all of the cities.
Correct.
So that even if we've already voted on it, we will get the benefit.
That is correct, you're not.
Because it'll be part of, bundled as part of an amendment discussion that takes.
That is correct, we have that option. And by the way, this is the same process we used last time this occurred. So the process, and by the way, I was sitting in a different chair. I was a member agency, I was the solid waste manager for the county of San Mateo at that time. I was a staff member, Rebecca and I worked together as colleagues and peers there. And, and so that process that we saw was about a three-year process. And we didn't get everything on the first crack, and there was, there was an amendment that came right after for those things that we needed to address and sort of tidy up, if you will. So it isn't, you know, I don't believe, and I know it's the opinion of our attorney, that, that we're leaving anything on the table or you're conceding anything in, in that fashion. So right now, we have those three items, bulky item, abandoned waste, and stormwater as the designated items for amendment-one. But that isn't to say, to your point, Mr. Mayor, if something else were to come down the pike that was flagged and it made sense for everybody to do it, of course, we would put that in. You know, we're not, we want the best agreement possible for ourselves and for our service provider here. So, so that's, that's how we see it.
If I could ask now a couple of questions. So one is just to amplify, I think, what I heard in the, in the presentation. The rates that we adopted back in November cover through 2021, essentially. So we've already, as part of that effort, we've got, so if we get a question from a resident that, does this impact rates, well, we've already adopted the, the rate structure. So it covers, covers the, through the end of the agreement, current agreement and into this. We had talked at that time about trying to encourage composting among both multi-unit apartments and, and I think, commercial. Does that have any impact on, you know, our, this agreement in any way? Or is that just, and, and I just want to make sure that a policy that we're specifically wanting to encourage
Right.
doesn't have an impact on this contract?
Yes.
That negatively costs us or has some issue for us?
Mr. Mayor, you and your colleagues are asking great questions tonight, and I really commend you for that. Again, challenging topic, as, as Councilmember Mueller pointed out. It's a big fat document. It has gotten so many levels of vetting, but, but I understand that to you, it's, it's still a relatively new process by the time it's, it's coming to your laps. If I could address the issue on the rates. So real quick, the agency, our responsibilities are to manage the contractors, the two major contractors we have, and to manage the site that we own collectively. And in doing that, we manage the cost part of the ledger. The, the revenue collection, in other words, what rates you set, how you set them strategically to meet your local member agency goals, that's done right here in this dais and in this chambers. We are not part of that. So you guys took, I think, a very sensible approach, and several others have done this too. Not everyone, but several others have done a multi-step phased approach for implementing rates to, to smooth out what the effects might be between rate year 2020 and rate year 2021. So I think you've taken a very good approach to that. If I could just throw a couple of things in this spirit of full disclosure. There's still some minor adjustments. One would be for a fuel index CPI adjustment. Both parties during the negotiations decided to, again, put that one on the table. And frankly, we're handling it this way right now. That's not a difference in how we do it. But there was no way we could project out what that fuel index is. You know, one year it's way up, one year it's way down, and it was kind of really spiking the numbers, and we, we just decided to put it over here. And as Rebecca mentioned earlier, the factor of growth in those communities that are experiencing growth, you know, will be dealing with that at the local individual agency level, so, so with that. I would say, so that's, those are the known costs relating to the collection side of the, of the operation, which is what this contract is all about, so.
Okay. Just a question about recycling in China. Is there something that you would recommend for us to be communicating to our residents? I'll give you an example, when my kids have gone through the tour at their school.
Yay.
You know, they were, they used to be told, oh, you don't have to rinse your recycled, your, you know, plastic bottles and stuff. But then when I was on the site recently, they're saying, yes, you should rinse your recycled cans or bottles. Should we be communicating, should we communicate that out to residents? I, I don't know if that helps as part of the predicament with, with the Chinese government's drastic reduction in the impurities. But I, I would like, I would, I would, how can we be helpful?
Yes, thank you.
In communicating out to our residents, things that would help address it, so.
Sorry. Sorry, I was getting excited to answer the question, pardon me. If, if I could, again, many levels to that discussion in my answer, I'll try to keep it very brief. So the materials that typically have gone exported to the Chinese market and to the Asian markets have been fiber products, paper, different grades of paper, cardboard, chipboard, newspaper, wastepaper, things of that nature. That's been the product that typically gets exported. The product that stays domestically are the bottles and cans. So that's a very important distinction. So while we have a major significant shift in the external markets, export markets, excuse me, the, the market for the bottles and cans right now remains unchanged. And that's a good thing, because that's about 40% of the material that the plant that, that your family got a chance to tour, the material that goes in the blue bin, about 40% of it is unaffected by all this. But the other stuff really is affected. And so the issue about washing or not washing, we generally, you know, we pulled back on the washing recommendation because of the drought. That, that was where that came from.
Sure.
There's a preference to have clean material, there's always a preference to have clean material. But with our sensitivity to the drought, we didn't want to exasperate that situation. So we did change our messaging a bit. And to your point about the messaging, I'd love to introduce my new colleague, Julia Au, who is right behind me.
Julia, right here.
Julia is our new recycling outreach programs manager. And she came from the county's household hazardous waste program. So she's, she knows our area, she lives in the county, lifelong resident, and she knows what we're trying to do. She's got a campaign cooking right now to get the messaging out in a big way. So we've had a bit of a gap, the position was open for quite some time. I, I came about a year and a half ago, and it was, the position was open even before then. But we've had a few other priorities, so she's here and we're getting things revved up again. And it really becomes very critical for us to get the word out in a very structured way. And we would always work with the city staff and the local jurisdictions to amplify that message throughout the communities, because you guys have a lot of great ways to do it. One other comment, if I could, you mentioned something, and I don't think I gave you a proper answer. You were talking about, what does this new restated amended contract focus on organics? The answer is yes. And the reason is, there are two new laws, maybe they're not even that new these days, but they've been around the last two or three years, and they have escalators in them in terms of compliance. There is absolutely a huge focus on the agency's part to be in compliance of the state laws. Love to talk to you more about it offline or whatever, this may not be the place for that right now. But I can assure you, that is a huge emphasis. So we're looking at different technologies that we can use to capture the material and, and harvest and use the attributes of the material at their highest and best use. Ultimately, with a very long-term aspirational goal of being able to capture the methane and use it for the next generation of some of the fleet, not all the fleet, but some of it, and use it as, as a fuel source for some of it. It, where the technology is today, where it could be in six or seven years, could be really different, and we hope it really advances in that regard.
Okay, great.
And I think the other key thing is reducing the paper. So, I mean, if you're following the hierarchy of.
Yes, yes.
Zero waste, it's, maybe yes, the document, I realize, is 900 pages.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to transition to a more electronic format. It's definitely something that's going to help us in the long run, and it's something to communicate.
Great.
Yes.
Last, last question, so, and it's also a comment. While I appreciate my colleagues', you know, concern about, about the document, I'm, I'm very concerned that we just don't have a lot of agenda time available between now and June 30th, because we are entering budget season. And, and I know that's going to take up a fair amount, and we've got a, for example, TMP we got to cover tonight here. So, so I am, I am not in favor of postponing. The flip side to this is that, since being the eighth city is kind of an important milestone for the contract's adoption, is there anything we wanted to ask for to be the eighth city? Let's, let's flip it around, is there an incentive? Alex, you had talked about more pickups of city, at city parks or frequent.
I think Rebecca has, has worked that sufficiently into the, the contract. So that was an outstanding issue for me, was making sure we were getting our, our local hauling done regularly and cleanly.
And, and just to let you know, they're doing a, an analysis now to have more pickups with some of our public trash cans, particularly downtown and areas where they fill up quickly.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not above using negotiating leverage here. The, so, do we have a motion to adopt the amended and restated franchise agreement?
I will second it, and I, I am sensitive to the, the amount that it takes to catch up. And I've had the luxury of being through this before and enacting a sure backup. So I've been able to follow it, and I think it's, it's better than we had before, definitely.
Great. All right, let's vote. Kirsten, did you have your vote?
Um, yeah, I appreciate the conversation, I'm going to abstain on this vote.
Okay, Kirsten, Councilmember Keith abstains.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Three votes for, two abstentions, thank you. All right, I know we have an 11 o'clock, but, but I'm going to strongly suggest we get started on the TMP. Thank you to the Recology representatives, to Joe, your team, and of course Rebecca, our team, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to make a motion to go past 11 now?
Yes, I think that would be a great idea, so.
I'm going to, I'm going to move that we pass the 11 o'clock deadline to finish the TMP, because there's no way we're getting to 32 minutes.
And.
Since we deferred it before, I feel like it's, we have to.
Right, I, I'm going to second that, that motion. And I don't know if we have a super majority, I don't know if we require a super majority for 11? Isn't it to go past 12?
Yes, it's a super majority for 11.
Oh, it is for, for 11. So let's, let's vote on going past 11. And Kirsten, I don't know if you heard that? How far past 11? Yes, she said.
I, I'd really like to, to be done at 11:15, 11:20, but I also want to be flexible if these conversations start, they start going places. So I'll, I'll urge the mayor to reel it in and keep us focused.
Can we say, we'll vote again at 11:20?
Actually, can we vote again at 11:30, please?
That's fine.
Okay, great. So.
At the amendment.
To 11:30, that's the amendment, right. I voted yes. Okay. Unanimous, all right. Justin and Nikki, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, councilmembers. I'm Nikki Nagaya, Assistant Public Works Director. So in the interest of keeping you on track and out of here by 11:15, I'm going to try to move through this as quickly as possible. It was about a 20-minute presentation, but again, I'll, I'll go as, as quickly as I can. So we have this item before you tonight, essentially to follow up on the info item that you saw in late March, on the status and next steps for the Transportation Master Plan. As a reminder, you also saw last week a study session on the Water System Master Plan. So just to give you an idea of what a master plan includes, the list of projects, the cost estimates, the priorities, it will look different, but it's a similar process as what you saw from Azalea, the city engineer, last week. So we have three items before you to cover tonight. I'm going to attempt to answer the first two questions on the screen. Why prepare a Transportation Master Plan and Fee Program update? How we got here? And then we're going to ask you for direction on where to go next, in particular, the infrastructure needs and process. So for a little bit of background and context, we're going to walk through just the transition between Connect Menlo and the general plan update that the city council approved in December of 2016. You'll remember seeing these guiding principles, as well as goals for the circulation element, of which there were seven on the screen. And then moving into kind of more detail, there were 86 policies and programs that the circulation element defined. Things like developing the Transportation Master Plan, doing the Fee Program update, developing a Safe Routes program, discouraging use of city streets as alternative to highways. We're going to come back to that one as we go through the presentation. But this is just some context for what the circulation element does. But this is just some context for what the circulation element does for the city. The purpose of the transportation master plan, I think you've seen this diagram before as well, four key purposes: to do community engagement on key issues, to try and get some consensus around the improvements that we want to build, so then identifying those projects, developing cost estimates, and then prioritizing the improvements for implementation. That then leads us into the adoption of the fee program. So as the council discussed in late March, this is important really as it relates to new development projects pending, as well as giving us a roadmap for implementation. And so the fee program itself establishes the connection between new development and new infrastructure needs and provides the nexus between any development that would be approved and the fees that those developers would be paying. As those funds accumulate, the city then matches or contributes additional funds, and then improvements are constructed. So to give you an idea of our current fee program, it's generally done in a three-step process, so identifying the cost of the improvements, allocating those to new development, and proportioning out what amount of the cost is a benefit to existing users as well, and then we determine the fee by particular land uses. So our current fee program that was adopted in 2009 has a pot of roughly forty million dollars of improvements. The calculations that were done at the time estimated that twenty-five percent of the benefits were going to accrue to new development. And so new development is responsible for funding roughly twenty-five percent of the program. And then existing users were benefiting, the existing traffic moving through the city is benefiting seventy-five percent. So the city then needs to contribute roughly thirty million dollars of the pot to be able to match the money we're collecting from the developers to construct those improvements. So what that translates to today, when we escalate it to current rates from the adoption in 2009, it was roughly thirty-two hundred dollars per single-family home that is assessed on new units coming into the city, as well as four dollars and eighty cents a square foot for office space. And then that's broken out into different land use categories, but these are just two to illustrate the fees that
But that forty million was based on 2009 construction costs and projects.
Correct, correct. So I did not escalate the forty million, but we've escalated the fees being paid because those are current for each fiscal year.
Can I just ask right now a question?
Go ahead.
So is it fair to say that there's so much new development since 2009 that the ratio of twenty-five to seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent to seventy-five percent could change?
It can change. I don't have that information yet, but that will be something that the consultant will be looking at as part of this process.
Thank you.
And we'd also expect the forty million dollar bucket to change as well. Yes. So to give an illustrative example of what this actually means in practice, so we've had a lot of talk about Bayfront, we'll come back to that, but one example on El Camino Real and Middle Avenue. So in the current 2009 Transportation Impact Fee Program, there was a recommendation for an improvement. And so the graphic on the screen shows an aerial photo of El Camino and Middle. The Safeway parking lot is at the top left, the El Camino Real, the five hundred El Camino Real, Middle Plaza site to the right. There was a recommendation to include an additional northbound left turn lane, as well as an additional southbound right turn lane in the fee program. And so what happens there is then you need to be able to accommodate an additional through lane on Middle Avenue, which encourages more traffic on Middle. We've had many conversations with the council about the desire to reduce traffic on Middle. And so the question here is whether this is really consistent with the goals of the downtown specific plan to encourage east-west connectivity across El Camino, consistent with the goals and policies you saw earlier with relationship to Connect Menlo, the middle pedestrian and bicycle crossing of the railroad tracks at the Middle Plaza and through the Stanford project. And as well, the improvements require narrowing the lanes on El Camino, repurposing the median space, in particular, right here on the north leg of the intersection, and then narrowing the sidewalks as well. And so we're looking at these improvements in the existing TIF program and needing to ask these questions about whether these improvements that were scoped are still relevant, given the values and the policy context that we've exhibited through these recent planning efforts. So then moving into how we got here, so in interest of time, I'm not going to walk through all of these steps with you, but this just illustrates the connection between how we got from the adoption of Connect Menlo again in late 2016 through the end of 2017, the first community, excuse me, the Outreach and Oversight Committee meeting that was held in October, and just the steps we used to get to where we are. More recently, in early 2018, we moved through several steps in preparing for the second Oversight and Outreach Committee meeting that was held in late March, including a series of info items with the council, and then ultimately leading us to where we are tonight. So circling back to some of the policy structure that we talked about earlier, so I apologize for the text on the screen, but really wanted to emphasize that this is kind of our starting point for some of the conversations we're having around the Bayfront Expressway improvements and how we got to where we are. So the text in bold talks about exploring improvements to Bayfront Expressway and Marsh Road and its connection to 101 in order to reduce regional traffic on Willow Road. And so what you'll see next are the series of slides relating to the improvements that W-Trans put forward to the Outreach and Oversight Committee in late March that then starts to do this exploration that this policy is guiding. So those strategies were developed based on prior studies that had been done, in particular leaning heavily on the work that Sam Trans did for the Dumbarton Corridor Transportation Study, as well as ongoing work that the Metropolitan Transportation Commission is doing around Dumbarton Forward, which is taking the work that Sam Trans did, looking at kind of short-term, five-year solutions that could be in place and constructed in order to advance the goals of the work that Sam Trans did, trying to resolve all the prior projects that the city has led, and then looking at things like limitations on right-of-way, and then issues around transportation data, travel patterns, collision history, as well as the feedback we've gotten from the community throughout the process. So this work all led to identifying kind of these four high-priority corridors. Bayfront and Willow were the first two that we talked about with the Oversight and Outreach Committee. And then we're also continuing to work on citywide recommendations on other corridors across the city, looking at bike network recommendations, pedestrian improvements, kind of those more micro-scale issues that Councilmember Klein had mentioned last meeting, and the incremental improvements for multimodal transportation across the city.
Okay. Okay. We might have lost Councilmember Keith. Give me just one moment.
So I think everybody needed a break anyway, so it's a good pause. So then moving forward from that framework, what we've done is then identify four types of improvements for Bayfront Expressway. So I will just show you some photos to illustrate what these are, and then we'll package them into the four alternatives that the consultant presented. So the first is looking at a bus-on-shoulder strategy, so just using the existing shoulder space to be able to run buses, particularly in the peak hour. This is an example from Minnesota. The second is looking at converting the existing expressway into more of a freeway improvement. And so here, the circles on the screen, regardless of the color, represent existing traffic signals on the corridor. So this is Bayfront Expressway between Marsh and University. The purple circles at Chrysler and the two Facebook driveways, if we were to upgrade the existing expressway to a freeway, those are locations where there would be modifications to access, and the left turn access in particular, coming from the Dumbarton Bridge, turning into those signals, would be eliminated. And so you would then have just kind of right turn access from the kind of southbound or eastbound direction to get onto Chrysler or to either of the Facebook driveways at Buildings 21 or 20. Then full interchanges, grade separations would be built at Marsh Road, Choco Street, and then either Willow or University. But it's unlikely, based on the Caltrans design requirements, that the spacing will allow us to do both of those locations. So you could potentially do things like a partial at one and a full interchange at another, but unlikely that we could do both simultaneously.
Is that because they were, they're too close?
They're too close together, right. So the last thing I'll highlight here is an elevation constraint. And so through many of the past conversations we've had, I think a lot of the discussion had assumed that we could potentially lower the infrastructure underground and look at underpass-type alternatives so that there wouldn't be as much elevated either freeway or interchange ramps. And so the work that the civil engineering firm that we are contracting with has done in the area shows the high water table, as well as sea level, that fluctuates with tidal flows, as well as the potential for sea level rise, all being concerns that they've raised about the potential to lower any of the infrastructure and then the cost that would be needed to continue to maintain pumping water essentially out from those lowered grade separations. So from an engineering perspective, it's possible, but it's just much more costly to do so.
Is the
Go ahead.
Is the Facebook pedestrian overpass a problem confounding this issue?
No, it's not.
So let me make sure I understood, because this was something that came up in Connect Menlo, that the idea that the Willow and University Avenue grade separation would be, those two streets would be underpasses and keeping Bayfront as is at the current grade. You're saying that even just those underpasses for those two streets, because the water table's so high, you wouldn't, the engineers are saying, are not recommending
Correct.
Even then, okay.
Correct, yes. And so as an example, the existing pedestrian undercrossing that is near Willow Road connecting the two Facebook campuses is underground. It's roughly eight to ten feet below ground. The roadway underpasses would need to be closer to twenty feet lowered. And so that pedestrian undercrossing does have a pump that runs quite frequently, especially in the wet months. And so as you go even lower, then you continue to have additional risk of water intrusion and needing to maintain those pumps. So in an emergency, in any sort of issue where the power goes out, the pumps go down, you then quickly have issues with water in getting into those underpasses. So again, it's not something that's completely infeasible, it's just much more costly and adds to the overall scale of the improvements that we're talking about.
Thank you.
So two last improvements that were identified. One is managed lanes. And so this is essentially a high occupancy vehicle or toll lane example. One on the left is from Alameda County on Highway 237 near Calaveras that was recently constructed. Again, these are just to illustrate what these things look like in practice. You can also pay a toll for access if you're not an HOV in these express lanes as well. So this could be coupled with or without the freeway-type improvements that you saw on the prior slide. And then finally, we've talked a lot about grade separation. These are two examples that we identified that were retrofitted into existing, kind of built-out conditions along 237 at Matilda Avenue in Sunnyvale, as well as at Woodside Road and El Camino in Redwood City. Just again, to illustrate the idea, these are not completely applicable to our instances, but just as examples. So getting back to the concepts that were presented to the Oversight and Outreach Committee, the same kind of four buckets of improvements but packaged into alternatives. The shoulder bus lanes is one option, conversion of the expressway to a freeway for mixed-flow traffic, essentially the lanes that are out there today. The third alternative, a conversion from expressway to freeway for mixed-flow and adding managed lanes. And then the fourth option was looking at standalone grade separations, as Mayor Otaki mentioned, at either University or Willow as a single standalone improvement. So I want to spend a moment just to talk about numbers two and four. And so since we had a significant emphasis in the policy context in the general plan, as well as the city's climate action plan with goals for greenhouse gas reductions, for purposes of discussion tonight, staff is recommending that you eliminate two and four from the conversation because those two improvements, you don't see significant traffic benefits, for example, for number four, because you don't eliminate all the bottlenecks on the corridor. So you really don't see a significant improvement. And ultimately, what the consultants have identified is you may actually see some amount of worsening on either Willow or University because you can't grade separate both in that instance because of the spacing. For number two, there aren't major significant impacts for the second alternative when you look at the relative change for number three. So you're not necessarily looking at major additional right-of-way impacts or access impacts. But with alternative three, you do have the benefit of potentially moving much more traffic, as well as moving many more people, because you're looking at investments in the high occupancy vehicle lanes and access for transit in those managed lanes. And so with those two things in mind, we're recommending, for purposes of the conversation tonight, to focus on one and three, in addition to thinking about another alternative that the Outreach and Oversight Committee talked a lot about, which is the reactivation of the rail along the Dumbarton Corridor. So I know that's a lot of information. I'm, again, trying to move through this pretty quickly so we can come back and answer any questions. But just in terms of where we would recommend to go next, so we did meet with the council subcommittee, so councilmembers Carlton and Keith, so thank you. I appreciate the input into the process. And what recommended, we're looking at four additional Oversight and Outreach Committee meetings to review the scope of work and kind of do a reset of the process in order to make sure that everybody's on the same page and we're aligning those expectations appropriately. And then moving into a series of three additional meetings to focus in on some of the other citywide recommendations outside of the Bayfront and Willow corridors. So again, focusing in on more of the incremental multimodal improvements across the city. And then also a recommendation to prioritize the rail alternative over some of the highway improvements that we talked about earlier tonight. So based on the feedback that we received last week as well from the Complete Streets Commission, we also wanted to make sure that there is a specific role for the commission to weigh in through the process, because we heard the frustration that they didn't have the ability to weigh in as much as they would like through the representation only on the Oversight and Outreach Committee. So recommending to build in additionally two meetings with the commission. One would occur in May, similarly to the scope of what the Oversight and Outreach Committee would hear. And then in late summer, we'd come back with the citywide network recommendations as they're working their way through the OOC process. But it would be a simultaneous review. We would then pull that information together in order to go out to community feedback in the fall, which leads us to the proposed schedule and next steps. So again, this is just reiterating the additional meetings that we were talking about for the commission and the OOC through the summer, moving into community workshop and outreach in the fall, the goal of releasing the draft master plan in early 2019. So overall, what this So overall, what this means is roughly a three to four month delay over what we're proposing now. But we think that this would then give the ability to reset and do the additional engagement on the issues that have been raised over the last few weeks. So with that, we're requesting direction tonight on two items. The first, and more critical from a timing perspective, if you have a crunch tonight on schedule, is authorizing staff to return with the scope and schedule modifications, which we can bring back to you on a consent calendar item if there's consensus there, adding the meetings as described. And then the second is providing direction on the regional infrastructure priorities. And so we can keep this up for illustrating the questions as you go through your discussion. And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Nikki. Are there any clarification questions before we go to public comment? I know a couple of folks have patiently been waiting. Andrew Boone, followed by Pamela Jones.
Just a, one clarification.
Oh, yes, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, there's so many pieces of the TMP, right? And what we're focusing on particularly is these four segments that you brought up and narrowing down solutions on Dunbarton. And just so we know, because anybody that picks this up later, I want to make sure it's very clear that there's a lot of other areas of the city, but we're not having that conversation here on this.
Sorry, I think this is still visible on your screens, as well as maybe on the sides that are coming back. So we're essentially looking at trying to solve two problems. One is the major infrastructure issues on those four corridors, but the other is also looking at the local infrastructure needs so that we get this full list of projects that we can then prioritize. And then as grant opportunities come up, we just can go after and there's a clear vision. So it's both of those things.
Just wanted to emphasize it, thank you.
Andrew Boone, welcome. Thanks for staying late here, followed by Pamela Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki and council members. My name is Andrew Boone. I live on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto. I attended the Outreach and Oversight Committee's meeting last month. And I wasn't the only member of the public speaking out against the grade separations, the flyover ramps floated for Bayfront Expressways, especially at University Avenue, although none of them are going to provide any significant improvement to traffic congestion or mobility because those just provide more capacity for a higher number of cars per hour. Those highway expansion projects aren't going to work because there aren't any more lanes on the Dunbarton Bridge. If we still only have six lanes, we're limited in the capacity. So trying to add it on Bayfront Expressway doesn't really solve the problem, although I think the managed lanes on the bridge and on Bayfront are a good idea. I don't think the flyover ramps are a good idea. They are not even consistent with the city's own general plan, which quite clearly says that sustainable transportation is to be prioritized. I'm glad to hear from Nikki Nagaya that the city's recommending that you don't go ahead with those grade separation projects and that the Dunbarton Corridor itself be preserved for a bicycle and pedestrian path, you know, instead of a busway. In addition, you know, this transportation plan really should be reflective of our needs for the future and adding car capacity is just not helping us get to that future. And that includes huge reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, 80% from the 1990 levels. That means really any large amounts of funding we get need to go into transit improvements and bicycle and pedestrian improvements and not trying to add capacity for more cars. So prioritizing first the bike path, then the rail operation, because that's hundreds of millions of dollars next. And lastly, or not at all, any expansion of traffic capacity on Bayfront Expressway or Willow Road. One idea discussed still by the consultant for this plan was to widen Willow Road to six lanes. That is a crazy idea. There is not even that much space in the public right-of-way for one additional lane. So why this is under discussion at all, I don't really understand. I think the transportation master plan also should include an explicit goal for placing physically separated bike lanes on El Camino Real as a long-term goal. That's what these plans are for, not for a decision you're making now this year, but in the long term. And in the long term, El Camino Real needs to function as multimodal street. It needs to be safe and truly inviting for people to use whether they're driving, walking, or bicycling. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Pamela Jones, followed by Cecilia Taylor. Hi Pam.
Good evening again. I come from this a different perspective, and that is, we are trying to solve a problem that really is not ours. We have the traffic coming from Santa Clara County, and specifically Palo Alto and Stanford have bullied us into accepting their traffic. And so then we're trying to funnel it all the way to the bridge. That's an impossible mission. I am terrified that we're going to have six lanes on Willow Road, two bus lanes. Or they might try and do that on University Avenue. We have children crossing those streets. We have senior facilities on both of those streets. We know that Willow Road is owned by Caltrans. And if we look at the 101 Willow Road construction and what that's going to look like in the end, we know the level of logic that they're working with. Okay, that logic, and they've sat here and they said, it's going to be worse when they complete their project. So when we talk about traffic in the downtown area, how are we going to solve that when Stanford is just, you know, they get to do what they want and they don't have to contribute. Okay, so when we get to the Dunbarton Bridge and the access routes there, we cannot access it without having a southern access route. And we act as though there's not money. Well, the problem with the southern end of our access route is that we haven't forced the corporations who are driving the traffic to participate in the project. So, you know, I don't know what I can do as a citizen. I come to you and I say, what do I need to do to help you protect our city? Okay, you can't do this by yourself. You tried, you know? I watched what you did with the Stanford project, and it was really sad because I believe we were bullied into accepting the situation as it was. And that was done by, when Stanford came here, they brought a supervisor. And I watched that treatment, you know? And so if that's what Santa Clara gets to do, San Trans owns Willow Road and they will do what they want to do with it. They have Bayfront, okay, which is fine, they can keep that, you know? The only good thing that'll probably come out of all of this is that we may have some control over the Dunbarton rail. You know, that's pretty much a given. I don't know the solutions to everything else, but I know that we cannot solve this with all of the constraints that we have. So let me know, let us know as residents, what we can do to support you with the challenge that we have and so that we can deal with the real issues and we can talk about the things that have been under the table and nobody has been willing to discuss for actually the last, well, since the bridge was rebuilt in the late 70s, early 80s. Thank you.
Pam, can I just ask you to make sure I clarify because it's late at night, apologize. The southern access, you mean, what had been proposed back in the?
That was back in the 70s. And you had the citizens for the Dunbarton Bridge. They sued, but that was in Barcadero. And poor Palo Alto, I have to say this, poor Palo Alto, their issue was not about the environment. They didn't want to lose their airport, nor did they want to lose their golf course. And at that time, since East Palo Alto was unincorporated, sure, they could run the traffic right by schools. So, I mean, we need to look at that. That information is available and we need to start talking about the real issue, you know, and stop doing this to my council.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just need to say something.
Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yeah, supervisor, to say Stanford brought a supervisor to bully us is just absolutely false. Supervisor Semidion was here that evening. He was there actually advocating for us on our behalf against, yeah, I mean, that's just absolutely false, needs to be corrected immediately in case anyone's watching that. Supervisor Semidion's held multiple meetings trying to take insight and is currently involved in working with the recent general use permit for Stanford. So that just, that couldn't stand without correction.
Cecilia Taylor, followed by Adina Levin.
Good evening, council, and thank you for the presentation, Nikki. I have a few comments regarding the update on the transportation master plan. One specific is that there's some information that's missing. When the Dunbarton Corridor study came out, there was a lot of concern from the Bellhaven neighborhood about the flyovers. And of course, the Dunbarton Corridor study was approved. So, but I believe that the comments from the community need to be put into the report because we do not want flyovers by any means. The other is that we do not want to have Willow Road expanded. Willow Road is at its maximum, and there's no need to try to add a lane or two. The suggestions that are being made, I just, I don't agree with it. The other is, I wanted to find out if any of the studies that were done by the consultant, did they ever show up during traffic time? Or were they only done on a Saturday morning? Were they done on a Friday afternoon or a Thursday morning where you could really observe the traffic? The Bellhaven neighborhood is trapped by Willow Road, 101, and Bayfront. And so I think a little bit more attention needs to be paid to it. I also agree with the comments about the southern access route. People also brought that up during the Dunbarton Corridor study and also with the transportation master plan, and that was not included as well. Thank you. Oh, one last thing, is that this is very hard to read.
Yeah.
And this is about money. We don't print things about money this size. We need to make it legible. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. Adina Levin.
Good evening, council members, Adina Levin. I believe I represented the view of the Complete Streets Subcommittee last time, and I wanted to add a little bit of color from, personally, and I wanted to share something that I had said at the Transportation Master Plan Committee, which I think builds on some of the earlier comments about the consideration of potentially widening Willow, even as we are looking to have more homes and more stores and more people on Willow and in the general plan wanting to consider that as more of a boulevard and its role as a local street, you know, not just a pass-through for cars. And if you look at Willow in Bellhaven, and then you look at Willow on the hillside of 101 compared to the bayside of 101, and you look at University at East Palo Alto, you know, compared to University in Palo Alto on the hillside of 101, and they look really different. And there's historical reasons why they look different in terms of how the communities on the one and the other side of the highway really had the ability to shape a street as a neighborhood street or really be considered a highway and the neighborhood was incidental. And, you know, given that history, I would really like us to have the consideration of Willow in Bellhaven in its role as a neighborhood street and consider that from a safety perspective and a, you know, function as for, you know, residents and commerce. And another thing that really strikes me in the way that this was presented, and it's, you know, it's getting clearer and clearer about what's being considered for 84, and the idea of having interchanges at Willow or University and not both, and therefore having the entrance and exit onto the freeway in East Palo Alto or Bellhaven, and the cut-through traffic for one or the other, that would imply, like, that's just enough to make one's head explode. That doesn't seem like something that could possibly work and therefore would like to really encourage all of the different solutions that help address our congestion by getting people onto transit and carpool and out of cars and working with Palo Alto on transportation demand and management to get their people out of cars like Sanford does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Adina. I don't think there are any more cards on this, or speaker cards? All right. Councilmember Klein, I think you?
Yeah, I want to be as efficient as possible. So if there's a slide you want to pull up or something, you want to make sure that we answer certain things because I don't want to lose track of that. I want to, I do want to thank you for the amount of work that goes into this and just, this is one of the most difficult topics. And you've extraordinary grace under pressure in this process. More pressure coming, of course, I'm sure more grace, but so far, it's very much appreciated. And so from that, there's a couple of things. One is knowing what we don't have control over, right? And being really comfortable, understanding that, you know, and, you know, a lot of the folks have mentioned it, we've mentioned it a bunch of times, you know, this is regional traffic, regional roads. You know, Dunbarton, we can be a part of the conversation influencing the bigger agencies, and that's about it in a lot of ways. The same way as influencing rail to move faster and to get funding. We can affect that by advocacy and getting more people involved. That's where the help really needs to be, is pouring yourself into those areas because I think those are the, you know, it all starts there, right? I think in a lot of ways. The end run, and I say this in a way that's, you know, I don't want to just completely shirk responsibility, but, you know, Stanford, Palo Alto, Mountain View, I mean, a lot of traffic goes to those areas through our city, a lot. Southbound 101 traffic going off Willow and then the left turn off of Willow onto Middlefield. High majority goes right through. And so we're kind of the through street. What we can and can't do, I think we do need to have much more, more serious conversations with Palo Alto, much more serious conversations about those intersections, about Middlefield and Willow, about, you know, the, they're capping commercial. You can tell they're drowning in their own fluids as it is. So they really can't help us, and I don't think they don't want to help us, they just barely are helping themselves, right? And, you know, when you drive into that town, they are really having a tough time with traffic. So I'm sensitive to that, but I also see areas where Sand Hill, El Camino Real, Alma, they've created these junctions that have just blocked off really the opportunity for us to have some kind of control, right? And so I'd like to start upping that conversation because I think without it, all that we do is going to be fruitless if we don't have a conversation about serious, at least, maybe it's a shared compensation, impact costs, there's something, because we are handling, I think, a lot of, a lot of the traffic. And I can almost guarantee you, the university traffic is not coming to Menlo Park, right? Coming up Dunbarton, they're not taking a shortcut to come to Menlo Park, they'll go Willow if they're coming to Menlo Park, but they're definitely going left. We've done the reviews on that. The other point is looking at Marsh Road, where I think we have, you know, some control, but trying to create better throughput to 101, which a lot of the traffic wants to go there. I don't want to increase capacity, that's one of the speaker's points. I think that's absolutely right. But I do want to get rid of the blocks, the natural areas that just cause traffic to queue and cease, and I think causes bigger problems. We have about a two and a half hour window on each side of the day where it's just highly intense traffic flow. And it's creepy in the other days, I don't want to discount that, but getting people out of our city as fast as possible, their cars out of our city as fast as possible is really, should be one of the goals without increasing capacity. And so when saying that, I want to acknowledge that rail, we need Facebook, we need advocacy, we need much more influence with those agencies to make sure they don't put money into somebody's expressway or move it underground in another part of BART, right? You know, funding gets taken. So we have to be all over that to make sure that that's happening in somebody's lifetime to get rail up. But also, it's how do we now, if we can't have, I'm not a big supporter of flyovers, so I'd probably view that as a little more prehistoric approach to the problem, putting more cement up in the air when I think most cities, regions are trying to take it down, unfortunately. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like we're going to have a whole lot of opportunity to do anything else in the ground without a huge amount of cost, so, you know, it becomes a managing of intersections and timing and lights and timing, and then separation of traffic, right? So that you have, people are going through, let them go through, people are, you know, turning, how do you manage these turn lanes so you can get some kind of way where it's safer but easier flow, and you don't allow the last-second merging of traffic or, you know, people that co-mingle when they see it's open on one side. I would like Dumbarton, if they're going to manage traffic, I'd like to see them open it up to more lanes going one way in the morning and then more lanes going the other way at night. Doesn't increase capacity, just opens the flow. And then, of course, with the buses increasing, how we move people outside of the cars, you know, anything we can do to improve that and advocacy behind it. The areas that I think are my biggest concern are, you know, if we do have traffic, let's accept that we're going to have traffic, and so what do we do about it? I still think having five different stoplight intersections between the Foothill and 101 causes more queuing. And I brought this up, and I think it didn't, I didn't make it very clear, and it's probably still not going to be clear, but, you know, that's, I'll try again. Trying to have a local road where residents can come out and be on their own lane, they don't have to wait to get into, onto Willow, I don't know if that's possible, but I'd want it to be almost like, if you see, you go into certain cities, they have regional roads, right? Where people can take, they don't have to get on the freeway. This is, how do we find a way so that people can get out of their neighborhoods, go one direction or the other, and nobody else can come in there except residents? And then I do believe if you take the traffic down to 20 miles per hour and then put in roundabouts, I'm going to say it, I think roundabouts work in certain areas. You have to have, everything has to be a roundabout then, though, or it doesn't work. But these are the ways of flowing. I want to get through an amount of time. I also wanted to start putting, considering, looking at alternatives that are cheaper, that are small steps, like no turn lanes, like we did on Willow, and doing that in other areas where we know there's going to be impacts, and not allowing people to cut through and taking away the turns at peak hours and forcing them on the artery. If we have an artery, force them on the artery, don't let them impact, and then, and preserve our pedestrian and bicycle lanes, if not expand them as best we can so that we can get people across. You know, if we have to make it slower and more painful for people to come, that's fine, and I think there's a lot of people who believe that's the best thing you should do, is ruin it, and people won't come anymore. I just think the queuing is going to be longer and more hours, it's just going to be miserable. So that's something I think we should consider a little bit more aggressively. You know, the other, I didn't bring it up, but I think Sand Hill Road, Alma, North Palo Alto, which has just been protected like a moat, and the most beautiful little protected species around is North Palo Alto. Can't drive through there until 11 o'clock in the morning, and you can't drive through there after 2:00, and even when you do, they have roundabouts and gates, and you can't go anywhere, and they force you right back where you came from. It's like a maze, and you end up back on Alma going, I don't know how that just happened. That needs to be mitigated, because it affects us again, it pushes all the traffic up Sand Hill, all the way into where we are and down El Camino Real, and I think it's a problem. I really do. And so those are areas that I think are big concerns. I did like the idea of taking the Bayfront Expressway and trying to make it easier to get to 101 so that people would go that way. If you could have them go south of 101 and take away the left turn on University and Willow, and just make them go to Marsh and then get on 101, that'd be great, because then you take away that, it's just a cut-through that was created by nobody's design, and so these are the things I throw out in the beginning, they'll have smart comments, and then I'll take credit for those as well.
Vice Mayor Mueller, thank you. Councilmember Klein.
All right, so I'm fine with two and four. I mean, I'm sorry, is it two and four? One and three? Was it two and four? I can't remember.
Dropping two.
I'm fine with dropping two and four, that's fine. I still want to pursue three, which is, I think, the one I'm talking about. I'm pretty tired. That being said, I don't want to prioritize five over three and one, and I want to explain why. You know, it's really funny, so I support the Dumbarton rail, I support the ideology of it, it's super important. However, I'm worried about saying ideologically I support the Dumbarton rail above all other things. Yeah, because right now, if you look at what's happening across the Bay Area, infrastructure investment is taking place, and more is being contemplated. Senator Feinstein's talking about funding a new Bay Bridge, and Measure B passed in Santa Clara County in 2016, and they're going back to try to get more money. And people are making investments in roads, they're making investments in infrastructure that cars drive on. And it's funny, because sometimes we're up here and we say, well, the future is electric cars that are self-driving, and sometimes it's not cars at all, and I don't know what the future is, but I know today people are driving cars. And that's what's affecting our, that's what's affecting our neighborhoods, that's where the cut-through traffic is coming from, and if we can get them off Willow Road, as we, and very frankly, I mean, when we did the general plan, the reason, you know, I know at the end where there was a discriminatory order that we'd figure out this infrastructure stuff, but when we were saying conceptually it was going to work, it was that this infrastructure would be in place, that we actually thought we'd be able to get traffic smoothly to 101 and get it off Willow Road to create capacity for the rest of the development taking place in the general plan. So we can't let it go, otherwise I just have no idea how they're going to make Connect Menlo work. I just don't know, they're going to tell us, well, there's actually capacity, and I'm thinking, well, is that just, like, you can fit another car in between those other cars that aren't going anywhere? So we have to figure that out. I just, I can't, I can't say prioritize that. And the examples I'd give is, I know in the last five years, they've put a ton of money in investing in vehicle infrastructure near Google. I know they put a ton of money in investing into vehicle infrastructure near Apple. That should be happening near us here at Facebook. And one of the reasons why it doesn't is because when folks like SVLG or Bay Area Council or Samsita or, you know, or representatives on MPC come here, this is the place where they come to get yelled at. It's not the place where they come for people to get behind them and say, make the improvement. And we need people to get behind them now and say, make the improvement, spend the money here, we need it. So I don't want to prioritize, instead of saying to them, oh, no, we want to prioritize Dumbarton over those improvements, no, I want to say to them, make the improvements. So, and then, you know, I can tell you about the rest of the TMP, you know, obviously, like, the TMP should protect our neighborhoods from cut-through traffic. It should make our, it should, you know, the safer, I know Safe Routes for School is involved and is incorporated into it, it should make it safe for kids to go to school. It shouldn't, I mean, frankly, what we need to do is figure out how to improve the quality of life for the residents in the city by alleviating what we're seeing with respect to these traffic problems. And that's what, that is why we had that vision of doing that with Bayfront Expressway, because when we talked about it, we said we wanted to make Willow Road actually more pedestrian and more cyclist-friendly by taking that traffic off of it. What could we do? If that traffic was actually off of it, all that cut-through traffic was off of it and going to the freeway, could we actually put in sidewalks and put in crosswalks and put in, and actually activate Willow, which now frankly is like, kind of pretty looking at, you know, commercial buildings going down the side, and look out for people actually trying, like pedestrians near it? So, that's my soapbox, I'm done.
Okay. Let's see, Councilmember Keith, via phone, if I can ask you to keep it short here, we're getting close to 11:30.
Sure. I mean, Nikki, a question for you. Did you want direction on the meetings and how the TMP is going, and if we think that the meetings are enough meetings to work with this?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so I'm going to hold off to see what my colleagues feel about that. Okay, is that okay, Mayor?
Feedback on the number of meetings, okay.
Well, I think she wants feedback to know if you feel like what we're doing, what we're adding is going to be helpful or not helpful, or if you want to see something different.
Okay, definitely. I've got feedback on that, but I don't know, Councilmember Keith, did you have anything else, or are you?
Yeah, but I know it's getting late, and I'm the Subcommittee with Kat, so I'd love to hear from you.
Okay, so first of all, let me, I want to thank you and Councilmember Carlton for assuming the sort of co-chair role, I think that will help a lot. In terms of the number of meetings, I do support the additional meetings that have been added. I'd love to figure out a way to get those, if I looked at the schedule slide, if you could go back to the schedule slide, you had, you have a City Council mid to late May 2018. Is there any way to get some of the North, Central, and South OC, OOC 4, 5, and 6 before, so everyone goes on vacation in July? So, you know, how, is there any way to, what can we do to either make that OOC 3 more of a check-in or something easier so that you can go right into OCC 4 and 5 perhaps in June before people take off in July, and then, you know, OOC 6? That's, comment on, I mean, I like the number of meetings, it's just trying to figure out a way around that July holiday.
Yep. So that's why we've identified kind of the range between June and August to host those three meetings. Originally, we were targeting one per month to just kind of space them out, but understanding vacation schedules, what we anticipate doing, if you want to move forward with this approach, is polling the OOC members, determining when they're most likely available, and then scheduling accordingly. But we would, I'm anticipating that we're likely going to target one in June and two in August, probably early August and late August, to try and give still some semblance of summer break, but we have then a multitude of consultant vacation schedules, staff vacation schedules, and then 11 members on the committee that we're going to have to juggle. So, summer's always a challenge, but in order to keep this moving forward, we see the need for those meetings to occur at some point in the summer.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, just having been on a number of large, you know, kind of conceptual projects like this, I would assume you may end up needing another community meeting somewhere in, at some point after the master plan's released. I just, I'm just, I just think that's going to be required at some point to have one more.
Yes, and that's a great point. I didn't build into this schedule, but there are two additional meetings of the Oversight Outreach Committee that are in the existing scope, so one is at the draft plan stage, and then one is for the impact fee, so we can revise this, build those in, and then also build in another community meeting to the scope, so that if we need it, it's there and we won't have to come back for that.
That's great. That's all I have, it looks fine.
Okay, so real quick, if you go back to the slide with the questions, I'm comfortable with dropping two and four, now that you've explained to me the whole water table issue, I guess certainly my intent, and I think with your input during Connect Menlo, was how do we control Willow being used as a cut-through between 101 and the Dumbarton Bridge? So if there are other ideas or other ways to control the amount of traffic that uses Willow as a cut-through, I'm more than happy to support that. I think maintaining Alternative 1, if I recall correctly, that's using the shoulders for bus lanes, if I have that correct, if I'm remembering the numbering, that, yeah, that I support, yeah, the one, the three versus five. Expressway for mixed flow management. Yeah, I think I concur with Vice Mayor Mueller that I don't necessarily, I definitely want to raise the importance of Dumbarton Rail Corridor. In fact, one question I have for you is, does that mean that the Phase 1 of the Dumbarton Rail, you know, corridor plan, does that become part of our TMP? Should it, in order, so that it should be weighed in and calculated as part of the TMP, you know, the Transportation Impact Fee, TIP, that comes out of this, you know, or is that, do you consider that just separate out of the TMP?
So originally, we had only brought forward the improvements, we'll say, within like the highway right-of-way, the state highway right-of-way for Bayfront Expressway, and we did not talk specifically about the Dumbarton rail with the Oversight Outreach Committee, because there was so much to talk about already as it related to the freeway, excuse me, the highway improvements. And so I think the rail does have a place in the Transportation Master Plan, whether or not it should be in the fee program is something that we need to explore further according to the state law that governs how fees are assessed and how you draw the nexus between development and the infrastructure improvements that are needed. So with the recent changes around state law that point to reducing the use of levels of service and leaning on the use of vehicle miles traveled, we may have that nexus, but we need to do that exploration and have a lot of conversations with our city attorney's office to make sure that connection is there.
Okay, so real quick, comfortable with 1, 3, and 5? Thank you. Comfortable with the meeting's schedule. The, just a couple additional comments, Mountain View. You know, I think Google's expansion, the whole North Bay Shore, Precise Plan, the whole build-out in Mountain View, I think, I don't know for sure, but I think there's a lot of traffic over the Dumbarton, you know, that winds its way there. Is there any way we can start a dialogue with Mountain View about getting their support toward some of these improvements? Because I see a lot of that traffic, at least appears to me, it's not just Palo Alto, it's Palo Alto and Mountain View. And conversely, even, you know, Redwood City to some extent. I mean, that's about the band of, and once you get to Sunnerville, it's all 237 and anything more. But I kind of look at that, you know, we, it's a regional problem, right? And so let's get them engaged. Final is the, when you get to the Sand Hill, and we've talked about this, you know, Alameda, De Las Polgas, Santa Cruz, that whole area, given that we've got an upcoming meeting with Supervisor Semidion and some of our San Mateo County, you know, Supervisor counterparts, and is there something that, I mean, I think we want to raise that as part of the GUP updated, sorry, I'm trying to, too late to find words, but the idea is, let's have that inform some of that, because that, as we've kind of talked previously before, should be part of our ask, and maybe we have to elevate that a little higher. So now that we are at 11:30, the, there's a question, how much longer do we need on this? Any other additional comments? And also, I know we do have a public comment on one of the information items, so do we have at least concurrence to go a few minutes longer to finish this up?
I think we're done.
Are we done on this particular topic? Kirsten, is there anything else that you had on this item?
Thank you. Nikki, do you need anything from me?
Yes, I think what we can do is then bring back a consent item with the scope amendment changes and reiterate what we heard around the infrastructure improvements, and then we'll be good to go. And we can preview that with the Subcommittee if that's desirable as well.
Right, and previously, Kat and I both made our comments at the TMP meeting, the Outreach and Oversight Committee meeting about removing, not doing the under crossings, because it just, it wasn't, it's feasible but super expensive, and not having that Embarcadero-like structure. And then the other issue that came up at the Outreach and Oversight Committee meeting was that we didn't, we were surprised when the consultants talked about getting, adding consultants talked about getting, adding a lane of traffic, because we're building the overpass at 101, and we're adding capacity for bikes. So why would we remove it from 101 to Bayfront? It didn't make any sense. So I just wanted to say that. And then I know it's late, so I will give it back to you.
So I can just make one point about the Willow Road, since we did have several speakers talk about this as well. So what we did was start with the recommendations that came from the Samtrans-Dumbarton Corridor Study, which included bus lanes on Willow Road. And in order to accommodate those, eliminated the on-street bike lanes. At the time, the city opposed that improvement. That was part of the comment letter we submitted to Samtrans. So what Wtrans looked at is ways that we could still accommodate pedestrian and bicycle traffic and the bus lanes. And what we heard from the OOC and the community was that it was not a good suggestion, so we will just take that off the table for bus lanes on Willow Road that includes the widening. So I just wanted to confirm that was where we were headed going forward, so hopefully gives everybody a little bit of ease as to where we're, we're going.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Nikki. And Nikki, I wanted to say thanks for doing such an excellent job.
Yes. So thank you very much, Nikki. Appreciate it, and, and Justin. Andrew Boone, would you like to come up with, I think you had a comment on item J3, the work plan?
Yes. Good evening, councilmembers. I wanted to remind you of my perspective, or that many other people share about the work plan not including an effort to increase the minimum wage here in Menlo Park. I know it was discussed. I was at the work plan meeting and provided comment, but I wasn't able to stay for your discussion, so I don't know exactly what your opinions were regarding that priority and others. But I'm disappointed to see it not make the list, and things like a, a new parking garage in downtown to make the list. You don't absolutely need a parking garage. That's a fact. It costs many tens of millions of dollars, and there are negative consequences of it, like more car traffic, obviously, and that's money you could have invested in transportation demand management or improving bicycle connections. There are ways to still get businesses to grow and have more customers without adding a garage, and compared to providing people with a basic standard, you know, a standard of living that's decent, requires us to go beyond $10.50 per hour. That's what businesses can still legally pay in Menlo Park and most cities in the state that haven't taken action to raise their minimum wage. So I really would encourage you to please consider modifying your work plan to add this. It's not something that takes a really large amount of time, particularly because many of our neighbors have done, have gone through this process. So you can look at, and the staff can look at, you know, the reports that have been done summarizing minimum wage issue, and you have many ordinances to, to look at as examples. So this is really a simple thing. It didn't take Redwood City very long to go from when they had it first on their city council agenda in December to last month, when they adopted their ordinance to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour by 2020, two years before the state. That's better than nothing. That's something Menlo Park can do. It doesn't take months and months of time. Many people have told you at that work plan meeting, I've counted five or six, who said, make this a priority, get it done. And so I think you should aim before the end of the year to do so. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Are there any other, any questions on the information items? Any comments?
I just wanted to say, I actually didn't realize it wasn't in the work plan. I did support it at the raising the minimum.
Just, it is on the work plan.
Okay, it is on the work plan. That's what I thought. I thought it was in the work plan.
I looked at the attachment on the agenda. I don't see it there.
There, okay. It's in, so, it's in the work plan. Okay. You're welcome.
Any councilmember reports? All right.
I, I do, I do have a report. I want to let you guys know, I'm going to be, and it's actually not for work. I mean, it's not for the city. I am going to be in, but because of recent events, I just want to disclose it. I'm going to be in Panama and Mexico for work. I'll be speaking on panels there. I'm not, my title is affiliated with my work. That's all.
Okay.
What? I'm going to Mexico City. I'm speaking to the World Bank there, and then I'm in Panama speaking to the IADB in May.
I'll be in Southern California at a conference, but I'm not speaking in, or anything. I'm at a conference. They just were asking if I had any, anything good to share about experiences with growth and tech that I should be willing to talk about in conversations, but nothing that I'm going to represent.
Okay. I don't have anything to report. I know we have an upcoming ABAG General Assembly meeting. I think, I think if there's nothing else, I'm going to adjourn our meeting. Our next meeting is on May 8th, and I did want to now sing, "Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Catherine, happy birthday to you." On that note.
Did we officially, I remember what it was.
Did we officially announce that we have 10 students going to Japan? They've been chosen.
Not if it did.
Okay. I am officially announcing. I knew there was something. We have 10 great kids and a little handful of adults who are all ready to go off to Japan in July.
Great. Thank you.
And, and I have, I'm not going this year. Peter is.
I am. All right. On that note, we are adjourned. Tom.